I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone.
Morning, Marty.
Okay, we've got the agenda in front of us. We've got approved the agenda. We've got, is it two additions? One is the Verizon Tower at 11:30. We need to call them if we have any questions regarding that. And then the other is the sheriff budget. We want to add that to it. Is there anything else?
We need to remove the Wellmark visit at nine o'clock. She's not able to make it due to the weather.
Okay, so delete that one.
Do you still want any discussion from the study committee?
Let's just leave it on there so we can talk about it anyhow.
Okay, okay. So we're going to leave it on for now?
Yep. Okay, if nothing else, we're in order for a motion to approve the agenda.
With those additions, I'll make a motion to approve today's agenda.
Okay, got a motion, need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. That, we have the minutes in your packet from last Monday's meeting. Has everybody got a chance to review those?
I thought they were very well written. I'll move to approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, got a motion, need a second.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, the first item on the agenda today is the Wellmark fiscal sixteen initial rates.
I didn't know if this would play into the work that Mark's been doing with insurance or not. Is this a good time to discuss that?
I think we can certainly, yeah, tell you what, you know, what the, yeah, what the insurance committee made recommendations for. I was going to leave in the committee report, Courtney and I had visited with a Holmes-Murphy, which is a broker. But I don't know, we could talk about that too, if you like, because it kind of plays into, you know, the recommendations. As you know, Courtney and I formed a insurance study committee, and the committee met twice. Most of you know that what we did is we had attempted to have the unions represented there, and then we also had at least, you know, one member from each of the four groups. Ken Meyer would have served as a representative from the union and a employee family. But I appreciate the work and the attendance of everybody that had attended to it. And again, we met twice. The first session was kind of a green light thinking session where we just kind of threw all the cards out on the table. There was no bad idea. We just kind of listed all of the things that could or should be considered and to make a recommendation to the board of supervisors. And then we all kind of debriefed and let it simmer for a couple, three weeks, and then we reconvened once again. And then we tried to, you know, kind of weigh out what the best ideas were, and we came up with three. And the first being to, they had recommended to shop around with or without the use of a broker. And then there was also a strong consideration and a recommendation to the supervisors to consider health savings account, HSAs, as an option only. And this would be that if an employee participated, perhaps that could serve as an incentive for a spouse to, you know, go elsewhere to their own insurance, to their own employer. And then the third recommendation was a wellness program, a genuine wellness program. We have a, oh, we have a very minor wellness program here, but they thought that having a, you know, a more structured wellness program wouldn't have an immediate impact on rates, but eventually would certainly do that. That also came as a recommendation from, most of you know Rick Willett. Rick had attended that first meeting, and he is a union steward for the Teamsters, and he said that his experience with that is that that's, has served counties very well. And then he really, and then again, I guess there's almost a fourth, but that the insurance committee would stay together and try and meet, you know, perhaps a couple of times throughout the year and, you know, reevaluate some of these considerations and see how well they went. So that was pretty much the summary of it. Do you have anything more to add?
I don't think so. I guess the three main things that we touched on that everybody agreed on.
Yep.
Was there discussion with tweaking the rates to give better advantage to the employee and a lesser advantage to family and spouses?
Yes, that was in the first session. It just didn't carry much traction.
Okay. What were the unions thinking about that?
Uh, the unions, when we met with all of them, didn't seem to be too terribly interested in it at all. It was interesting, one of the discussions we had had was at the, one of the, the first meeting, Dicky had said there's quite a few new employees out at secondary roads that are doing just that. There's a lot of single plans out at secondary roads. Seems like a lot of these new, younger hires that they've done, for any given reason or circumstance, are all on single plans. And that, I mean, that was just part of that discussion, but it just didn't seem to get much traction. I would, you know, imagine due to fear or perhaps too good a deal the way it is. Gene and I, as we've been negotiating with these union agreements, we have left, the discussion has been that the insurance would remain open for, you know, subsequent years beyond fiscal year sixteen. But once again, it surely hasn't met with their favor at all either. I think there's a lot of people, Neil, that have their spouses on it with or without an option for them to go elsewhere, but it's just too good a deal when the county picks up eighty-five percent of it. And that's, that's what the fear is.
Insurance is a very good deal, and, you know, if you do the math and look at our change of insurance rates, you know, it's, family rate's going to go up eighteen hundred dollars either plan, and fifteen hundred of that's picked up by the county, so it's just tremendous bargain. It's less than that for the single policies, but it's just a huge benefit when eighty-five percent of the insurance cost is paid by the employer.
Right.
A lot of that, though, too, is the Affordable Care Act. There's a lot of uncertainty right there right now, and a lot of people don't want to make that switch until they know what's going on.
Right.
So that plays into it also.
Thank you for your work on that, Courtney and Mark. So are you going to move ahead and do some shopping around with Holmes-Murphy, have them get us a bid or?
Well, let's, let's take a segue to that. I'll pass this around and perhaps just even leave it here just for your own review. We met with Brett Mackey. Brett is, Brent is with Holmes-Murphy. Holmes is very, very old and highly regarded insurance broker that operates in several counties and cities. In fact, he gave us a reference list midweek in the, in the state of Iowa. Their, their work pretty well centers around not just insurance brokerage, but also in HR support. And Brent's initial presentation centered around providing additional services. And in a nutshell, I'm not interested in additional services. I'm interested in ways to drive down our rates. And so what he first presented us was, I guess what I'll call the Cadillac Plan, which he estimated ranged anywhere from eighteen to twenty thousand dollars per year, you know, and, and had quite a little bit of HR support in there as well, ability to meet with employees and to provide analytics and so on, and would include, you know, being able to shop rates. There's three major players in, in Iowa now, and they are Wellmark Blue Cross, Coventry, and United Healthcare. And he said that they've been able to, I'll find out where my notes are. He said that there was the, for them, what was that? They use their own analytics. Help me with the vocabulary here.
They have their own actuaries.
Actuaries, yeah.
The numbers, and so when Wellmark said your claims went up by this dollar amount, they had a guy from their company that said, hey, we looked at these numbers and we have it going up by this amount.
Yeah.
So they were able to, you know, they tell us that, and we're like, okay, but.
Cost. Because the, he says they generally take a very conservative approach when, you know, arriving at suggested rates. First off, it helps if you understand that there's two major components of the, of the insurance premium itself, and that is the administrative fee and then also what's known as the discounts. And the discounts are what the providers will offer the insurance company in terms of, all right, we'll do a, a scope and we'll cut it forty percent under your plan, okay? And then they, they cut these deals with all of these providers within their network, okay? So, so what, what Wellmark impacts our rates in its claims base, we understand that, but in addition to that, it's their ability to make deals within their network and then also charge, you know, whatever they're going to for an administrative fee, okay? And then that plugs in what your rate will be, okay? Where brokers seem to be able to make an impact is they will, you know, find a way to reduce administrative fee through another third-party provider, or they'll impact those, that claim experience through actuaries. And then also, what was he saying about discounts, where they'll actually go that and above in certain areas, like he gave the example of, I mean, he had the case where, you know, the, the ENT told him just to take his daughter right across the street.
Yeah.
And said, oh, they do a good job. And so when he went there, he found out, you know, how expensive it was going to be, and it still didn't, you know, he still had a deductible, and so he went and shopped it around on his own, and that's essentially what they do, okay? They'll send you to another provider that gives you the deepest discount. And so that's, that's going to impact your claim. They also, he, he said they sit in, write in with the unions. They, they're part of the union discussions and help, you know, a little bit, maybe what Neil just talked about, is find a way, you know, for them to participate in a reduction through, you know, patient education and that sort of thing. Sixty-five percent of their business is through Wellmark. Let's see here. Said that, he said that they also take a hard look at our paid claims versus expected And then he said, you know, he got to the end of his presentation, and, you know, when I just asked, I said, well, I said, this is nice, you know, all these things you can do, but what I'm interested in is somebody just act on our behalf and reduce our rates. And he goes, well, we can do that. And he indicated that would be about five thousand dollars, again, if they just shopped for it. Of course, I asked the next logical question is can you guarantee five thousand dollars worth of savings? And he said, well, there's no guarantees, but he said they've been quite successful in doing so. This is just one broker. Courtney had a caller and just a quick stop by the week before, just dropped off information. I mean, there's certainly more than one broker other than Holmes-Murphy. If this is something that the board wants to investigate, I would certainly, you know, suggest that we do an RFP. There are local brokers here also, but again, it's, it's argued whether or not they have the kind of clout that some of these statewide or national brokers have, but it's still open for discussion.
Are there any brokers that work like attorneys and do it on a commission basis?
Yeah, it's, it's, that's, you know, I, I would have no problem spending the five thousand dollars if I knew there was at least fifty-one hundred dollars worth of savings, but it doesn't seem to be.
There, nobody does know the percentage of savings or anything?
No.
I sit on the Wesco board over in Dennison. We switched to Holmes-Murphy about a year ago, and I haven't really had a chance to sit down and play and, and discuss with him how our claims are going, what, but they, when we switched over there, they saved us about six thousand dollars. But in the interim, I've talked with a couple of people here locally, and they said, well, a lot of times what these agents will do, they'll shoot you a good price first year, and then when the claims start coming back in, and then they'll jump it. So that's one thing you got to kind of watch too, so. But in the meantime, our next board meeting in Wesco, I'd be willing to talk to Clay a little bit and see how our claims, how they treat us on claims, and, because that's an important factor right there, the service behind it.
I wanted to talk to, there was a couple counties, there's really only a couple counties that they represented, represented. I saw a lot of it, the cities and schools. I think it was Dallas, maybe, and Lloyd, right? I mean, there might have been another county. So I was, thought it'd be nice to maybe talk to one of them and see how much money they've saved, because they, I mean, they, I called the office, they should be able to tell me that, I would think.
Who would you speak to, just the auditor?
Probably somebody in that office, yeah. At least that gave us a pretty good, I mean, their claims are probably different than ours, but at least give us an idea.
Compass was that service that they offered, and they say you can actually subscribe to this compass, even whether or not you take them or not, they're an independent agency. But Compass is a program that allows price comparisons for services between providers. So say for an example, your, your daughter needs tubes, and, you know, they, you know, they say, well, just go up here to provider X. This compass, you let them know what this, you know, what service you need, this compass will do a shop, a price comparison. Say you haven't met your deductible yet or your copay, and so most or all of it's coming out of your pocket. This would send you to the one that's going to be the, the lowest one. And he goes, and if you can get your people, you know, even once they've got that paid, he said, if you want to, you know, get that comparison done, that is going to impact your rates very positively. Fifteen to twenty dollars per employee is the notes that I had. He said about eighteen to twenty thousand dollars a year for the full service and about five thousand dollars a year. He said it's negotiable and.
Well, it sounds like your committee's making some good headways here, you know, as far as finding the best deal. I think the margins are real narrow between companies, you know? So the savings is going to be hard to come by.
Any other discussion?
Thanks, Mark. Anybody, I mean, what do you see as our next step? Do you want to, do you want to just visit with some of these counties and?
I'd like to. I'd like to at least have an idea.
You comfortable doing that, or do you want me to sit in with you?
Just send them an email.
Okay.
Okay, with Wesco, I'll talk to Clay.
And then you'll talk back?
Yeah.
If there's, if there's a next step that you want me to take, I'm certainly willing to follow your guidance. We're looking at another double-digit increase again this year.
I just get the feeling that our current carrier thinks that they own us and can do what they want. I don't know if that's the case or not, but.
It's a little how I feel.
Yeah, you never know until you check it out.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
As far as, as far as our representative, is she going to schedule, reschedule for next week or?
I don't know if it'll be next week.
Okay.
Okay, that takes care of the first item. Second item on the agenda, secondary roads. Dave?
Hi, Dave.
Morning, everybody.
Morning, Dave.
Got the budget worksheet, mine's number one through thirteen. That's how we do our two, that's good. Not any substantial changes, maybe other than in the road use tax, a little better than half the way down the page. We're no longer, the transfer of jurisdiction funds was the third line up from the bottom. That's all melded into the road use tax now, so road use tax, you know, shows that it's going up, but in, in reality, it's not going up very fast. The bridge funds, that's always a discussion, you wonder why all folks, why, why some years we're not getting it. The bridge funds are a pass-through. If we do a, do a local bridge project, the federal aid, it'll pass through our budget and it'll show up in our budget if we do it with our money system. We've got one that's on the local system in the plan that should be done in this period, so we're showing two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the bridge funds. Didn't really do anything with the fuel depot, the reimbursements on there. I've got that tied to the expenditure, and again, it's kind of an in and out. I've left it kind of up there, even though the fuel rate has been cheap, and just the last transport, a little bit, a little by since, but I don't really know what's going to happen there. Never been real successful at guessing that very good. On page two, we've got some blank lines in, in between. Basically, we've budgeted on the, on the major categories. The O-20, which is construction, which is the eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars at the top. At this point, it's, it's kind of a shot in the dark, since we don't really have a formulated program, but we do have sufficient funds to do that. It's pretty similar to what last year's was, is eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, depending on how we get our local projects. Let this spring and completed, we may not achieve last year's eight fifty-seven. May roll over into this current year. Down the bottom of page two, that's administration, our first, first line, the seven thousand series. That's not up a whole lot. For the most part, that's Becky's salary and half my salary in there. On page three, engineering, middle of the page, the three twenty-five, three, that's up from last year's primary because of the new employee that we have. Now to page four, bridges and culverts is the first, first section in. The ninety-four, eight, that's down over last year's budget and down over prior year budget. Don't expect quite as much work, contract work with like the Grout Scout and Murphy in this coming year. Middle of the page, that's one point seven nine seven million is roads. That's down a bit. We should process quite a bit of gravel yet this coming year within the current budget, and so our gravel stockpile should be pretty well replenished, and we won't be needing that much gravel a lot in that count.
Dave, is that that one, the one seven nine seven there?
Yes, it is.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, that's fine. So that's materials, all materials?
Yeah, it's, it's materials. It's really our biggest account, you know, it has all the blading granular in there, all the payroll and fringe benefits for that, all the hauling of granular. The granular purchasing is more than likely. Actually, that would be the second line from the bottom. You can see historically, the granular purchasing is usually a pretty good number, it's usually six, seven hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, so that's the material?
That's, that's the material.
Okay.
You can see that now they're worth six granular, that's the material. And usually, most of our accounts are made up of a, of a material or a vendor supplied account, and then the salary that we prorate through the accounts based on how much time you spent in those and the appropriate fringe benefits that go along with them.
That'd be in this one seven nine seven, right?
Yes, yes, yeah, all that would, it's.
So it's everything that's tied to?
It's, it's tied to a lot of things.
Okay, so there, that's why there's nothing in that lower granular.
That's just material?
Yes, yeah, it's just, it's all tied in there. We're just budgeting the major budget categories rather than all the subcategories. Have done, that's how the budget's built, is from all the, the minor subcategories, that's the way we build it. But we only require the budget of these major, major categories, so that's what we're doing. And there's so many variables in the road budget, as, as you all know, you know, we just had a snowstorm, well, what if we didn't, you know, and have a snowstorm?
And it only snows on weekends?
It does.
Yeah, never.
It's coming back Wednesday.
Eight to five, or overnight?
Yeah.
What's the timing on that?
I don't know.
And, and it does.
Is it really?
It does give you that, that flexibility. And really, in, in the, in the end of it, I think we're really down to construction or capital projects, and all the categories lumped together, other than only two control items, so there's huge flexibility, but there's huge ways for variance. It's, this is a rather, in a lot of ways, a lot of imprecise budgeting, just because you don't know. But it's amazing how every year, kind of comes out, the bottom line comes out okay. I don't know how that is, I think it's the grace of God myself.
Get on. So are you a fan of the new budget sheets or?
Uh, there's a lot of lines there, but, you know, it's, it's not as bad as I thought it would be on an old dog, you know? And it's, it's really, if you look at the thing I've got, it's a lot worse, but of course.
Yeah, you always had your own sheets in there.
Yeah, and it, it's lengthy, and it's got every account in it, and that's the way we built it up, from, from starting with the small. Oftentimes, you can make an estimate just from past experiences, looking at what you have, it's just as good without a lot of. I'm not sure what you'd call it. On to page five, down near the bottom, snow and ice. That hasn't shown up with the history. If you look down one, two, three lines below that, that's where it showed we've got something going on with the account number there.
There's two, actually, there's three.
There's, yeah. It didn't melt that.
Probably conversion issue.
Conversion thing.
We can move that, that down to the, the line that has the history in it, just so it's not.
Yeah, and who knows? You know, I mean, that, we, we don't go back a number of years, but there's, snow and ice actually includes materials and payroll, but doesn't include any equipment costs or any of that other thing, or covered else. And in a bad year, that could be double this figure very easy, just for that. On page six, traffic controls, that's kind of in the norm, what you've done. It's primary expenditure in that is painting the roads, pavement markings, and that can run from forty to ninety thousand dollars. We've got signs, a sign man's salary in there. We do, do run some of the sign costs through there, but there's another area where we do run sign costs through. The next one down is road clearing, the forty-one thousand, one hundred, and that's weed and brush control. It's a little less right now than what it's been in the past. We've lost our weed man again. Do something about that. Not really sure where we're going to go with that. We've always had, had a full-time guy and then a part-time guy doing it. I hope, we've got a couple, couple people that have talked to me that might be interested in it on a part-time basis throughout the summer, where we can keep the cost of weeds spraying lower. Fourth lineup from the bottom is new equipment. This year, I put in a grader, a dump truck, and two pump trucks. This year, I put in a grader, a dump truck, and two pump trucks.
What, a grader and what?
Grader, a dump truck, or a snowplow truck, and two truck pups. While I was on that, I was gonna ask you, but it would be, okay, we've got about $17,000 in our current budget list, which is about half a pup. If I got a quote for a pup and to see where they were at and maybe purchase one out of this budget, it's not gonna louse the total count up or require a budget amendment or whatever.
Are these additional or replacement pups?
This would be kind of both. One of the used ones that we bought has got a cracked frame, so we've more or less relegated it to just hauling the stockpiles so where it's cracked toward the back end. If it does fail, it wouldn't cause any grief if the box fell off in a stockpile. We don't really wanna pull it down the road, do that, because it could be a little bit of a hazard.
So you're leaving it just on site?
We're just leaving that on site. Stockpiling, hauling with it, stockpiling, we're not really too concerned about it. We're just monitoring this crack. It's one that we didn't have a lot of money into. And it appears that the pups are working out and the trucks are set up to use and we've got...
Pups we pulling now?
We're pulling four now and we're done. And there are certainly times when we could use five or six. And there's times when they sit in the yard, but they are fairly minimal, I'm thinking, you know, in the low 30s is where they'd be for cost. They do double your production. And even the cheap deal, it's a pretty good deal. And I had, you know, there was a time of it being new and they were kind of afraid of them, but we're not anymore. They're willing to pull them, they wanna pull them.
Yeah, I'm a big believer in them. It just makes a lot of sense to have one employee pulling double the load or practically that, just a matter of how busy you keep them.
Yeah.
You know, if they're parked, they're not doing anything for us, just a matter of the hours you put on them.
Yeah.
And how much hauling we're gonna do versus how much we're gonna have other vendors haul for us.
We've been doing a lot of our own hauling and we've been doing stockpiling. Now we're stockpiling with trucks and replenishing the pile of car oil we consumed last year. We're hauling it from Lukeout down to Carroll. And I don't know that we're gonna get the time to get down to, and even if, for instance, that pile's gone, which we would like to do.
Yeah, historically, like the former Cluckey pit and the Rishel pit, you know, those were right handy. Now you need to haul more than you did.
Yeah, they were right in the neck of the woods to where you'd be out.
So this all new equipment?
That's...
New or used?
That would be all new, yeah. The grader would be new and the dump truck would be new and two pups. And I guess getting back to my former question, would it be okay if I got a quote, a lot to see what it was for purchase this year, if possible, and not the same thing we do next year?
I don't see a problem with a quote.
Would you put it to use right away, you think?
No.
And I think so.
So I'll do that.
Thirty thousand by one, do you think?
Thirty thousand bought the last two. I don't know if it's gonna buy this one. And Brady is the one that we went with and we're very pleased with their aluminum. And now it's coming, like, you know, replacing the brakes and things like that. We have their vendor online where we can go directly to the vendor, not have to go back through Brady and pay a markup for parts. So we should have a good parts path for the future because it's next, hopefully it was and I can't remember, but we've got a truck vendor for parts to go and they like those.
Yeah, I would think if we could put it to use right away and then file me.
On to page seven.
On to page seven?
Another big account, equipment operation. That's got the fuel. Fuel amounts to about half of that. It's interesting, and a quarter of that's the fuel depot, which we've had in operation since 89. Fuel depot, we're kind of just the manager and the operator of that. Total fuel sold out of there, we only use about 5% and about 7,000 gallons of gas, unless we get the road department, the school is the major vendor, I guess, major one user. And they use roughly half of the fuel from the fuel depot. So this number is a little bit inflated, you know, the amount that we've got in the fuel depot of 470,000 that was spent in 2013, 2014, kind of mid-page there. That typical county would be in there. It's another kind of evening out, like the federal bridge money.
Does it include repairs then also?
It does, yeah. It pairs quite a bit of salary for working on repairs. It includes parts, includes tire, oils, batteries, things like that. So probably a realistic number to compare with other counties, which we do on our annual report to the DOT. We take off that money from the fuel depot, we treat it as reimbursable. We take that 474,000 we spent on the fuel depot off that 1.85 million, so it would look more like 1.4 million than, which would pretty well be in line with the other counties that not have that much official inflation.
So this number right here, is that what you're talking about? This 459.60, is that dedicated primarily to the depot? Is that what it costs us? My question is, is what number down here, if there is one?
About middle of the line there where...
Right here?
Right here?
There's two numbers right here, 156,000 in the last biggest history we got, 269,000.
Okay.
The other diesel fuel is our diesel fuel that we burn at 474,000.
Okay.
That you see there. I was using that number kind of interchangeably, but they're very close to being one another.
I guess my question is, is what expense do we have in that depot as far as operation throughout the year?
We're reimbursed for the expense.
I understand.
City and the street.
Okay. We're totally reimbursed for those?
Totally reimbursed, yeah.
And other departments too would reimburse Dave's.
So it's just not the fuel?
A nickel a gallon is what we add on it right now. We started at four cents. In fact, we started at less than half a cent, nickel, and we're trying to do an accelerated payoff because we spent 20 some thousand dollars...
On that meter?
Card reader and the monitor here, maybe two, three years ago, they ran over our card reader. That was insurance.
It got in the way.
It's something different.
You know, Dave, you've talked in the past as far as what we use out of that. You talked about like 15% that we actually use, the county uses out of there, and then the rest is the cities and schools and other departments?
Yeah, it's down to 5%.
Is it really?
Yeah, we're 131,000 gallons, we were 7,000 gallons.
So it's really crap?
And we could step up our use, I suppose. There's no real reason to. We've got a 10,000 gallon diesel tank at the shop and characteristically, we usually run like 86 to 90,000 through it. And the remainder of our fuel expenses is tank wagon to our outline motor graders or seven, seven outline shops. In the summer, we have 11 in winter. On page eight, middle there, the 119,200 is dual materials and supplies. That's a little bit less than it has been in the past, but things like corrugated metal pipe, shop tools, hand tools. Look, you need, let's see, piling, sheet piling. There's payroll accounts that are in that. Down at the very bottom of the page, 133.7, is buildings and grounds. Just for consideration or thought, I put in a new shed similar to the Manning shed
Took us about 20 years to build that, to decide to build that Templeton one. Is this year one then or is this year 19?
We're pretty chesty now. I think we might be able to get that done in two or three years instead of 20. Now that we've, oh, well, that works.
How is that one working out?
I think it's working out okay. I haven't had the operator down there since they took the old one off and I haven't talked to them, they'd knock the concrete walls down.
I don't think they have. I just drove by. The building's gone, but it's right up the street.
Yeah.
Didn't go far.
It didn't move far. I didn't realize that.
Oh, he bought two lots.
I know, I know. The operator down there, Tim, is just tip of pink with it.
It's my specialty.
And the other thing, the other three sheds that we did insulation on and the liner and whatnot, that did run into some money, but it just really transformed the sheds. It almost made them like brand new sheds. They're warm and they're quiet. It'll take a while to pay for that fuel, but sure will happen.
Yeah, but just look what they can do as far as working on machinery and stuff. You just pull it in that shed and we can do a lot of that stuff ourselves if it's heated shed.
Yeah.
It'll save us some long haul.
Yeah, it sure will. Yeah, we've, so, you know, we've already got the plan. If we, if you're willing to do it, we'll bring that up again. I put it in the budget anyway.
Would you just mirror the Templeton building?
Manning.
Or Manning, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think that's, probably one thing I don't like is it might be good to have maybe another window in that or maybe two windows in that, because we've got one pretty small window in there.
Give it a little more light.
But otherwise, in the end, I was pretty pleased with it. Maybe after the two, three years it'll take to develop, we'll know what mistakes we made there so we can correct those.
What did that shed actually wind up costing?
Just a little over 130, and that was counting all the electrical that Ron put into it.
But very helpful that Ron does the electrical.
Yeah, and the quality was just really good. He's an actionist. Yeah, the exact number is right in that 130.
Agreed.
Thank you.
The electrical?
Yeah, that conduit is lined up and I mean, it's just, yeah, it's really nice. Hopefully, we can go on a tour one of these days and check it out. I don't think there's anything other than the total at the bottom and that's 6.283 million, I think that's... If you look across the expense total there on page nine, 6.49 million, 6.216 million, 6.296 million, 6.283 billion. So it's kind of in the neck of the wood of prior recent budgets.
So how do you think your 2014 budget's coming in? Is that pretty good? It's been pretty good for this time of the year? Right here.
Oh, I think so, yeah. Yeah, I just, we've got some big expenditures. We've got a couple of gravel piles to put in that are pretty big and our fresh concrete. We've got 25,000 tons of twine, 65,000 tons of sparks to put in, an unknown amount of fresh concrete, but maybe 20,000 tons of that and...
Of course, I can change if we get any more of these.
Page 10 is the property tax and I ask for the full amount allowable by law. The first number, the 216.649 is the 16 and 78 cents on all property and the 1.9 million, the next number is $3.038 on rural property.
Those are at the max?
Those are at the max. I'm not sure what page it was, I didn't look at that very hard or pay attention. Well, I think that's it.
Well, it's interesting that you had your budget, Dave. We got newsletter from Bill Heckroth. He's our lobbyist for the supervisors and he had a bunch of stuff about different counties. 33 of the 99 counties have debt on their roads, on their secondary roads, and the average debt is like 6.9 million dollars, the counties that have it. And another 29 transfer quite a bit of local option sales tax and the average transfer is 774,000. So, and 10 of these had, were in both groups where they had, used both local option and had debt. So that was kind of interesting, but...
That is interesting, yeah.
But one thing unique about some of the counties, some counties have such a tremendous amount of their property under TIF that this levy doesn't touch TIF property, but if it's debt that you're serving, TIF does pay for debt. So some of these financial companies are encouraging counties to incur debt so that when they have a levy, it affects the TIF property as well as the regular property. But we don't have such a high percentage in some of those counties. And I've talked to some of those financial advisors, they says, no, you're not, don't have enough TIF in your county to make borrowing money a better deal than paying like we are.
He also had on there about what the new changes would be for each county. So if you're ever interested, actually, Carroll County, the new... If the 10 cents will go through all of the different forms of the amount, plus 7.35 dollars.
Overall, and Gene and I work off the same material here, the DOT thought they needed at a minimum 200 and, what is it, 215 million to get all the critical areas and raising it 10 cents would raise 173 million overall. And Gene told you how it would divide us for our counties.
And they are distributing it across from the farm to market.
Yeah, that's the good news. It isn't by the time 21, it's by the...
By the formula.
Right, the old formula.
Well, this was on Bill, something he sent out.
Yeah? I haven't seen anything on our service bureau yet. Usually, they generate this.
There's a number in Carroll County.
Dave?
What do you want?
I may have deleted it, Gene. Maybe you could just forward it to Dave. I think I copied what I wanted and then deleted it because I got so much stuff.
I can maybe take this out or take it out.
The nice thing is, most of it will be coming locally, 551,000.
Yeah, it's got split up between local farm market, farm market, jurisdiction transfer, that's what that means.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's jurisdictional transfer. Farm to market and secondary roads fund.
A lot of that would be going back to the cities, the way we have it, have the formula there.
And the total 21?
What was the total amount, Carroll County? I didn't write that down on the 10 cents, Gene. 700 some thousand?
730, 735.860. And that between to be spread up between all three funds.
Yeah, that's for...
551,575 on SRF, 172.909 on farm to market, 11,376 on farm to market jurisdiction transfers. transfers.
Any other questions on that?
When will you get a word on a quote for that?
No, I don't think it'll take too long. I think I could get it this way. I haven't called that Brady one yet. Use the same spec that we've had in the past. The city has got some extra concrete smelling. The crusher guy is here with his equipment. And they're going to start with the city at first. They have been a pile down there. They're running short of space down below. They're willing to let us have some of the finished product just for the cost of crushing. So basically, you know, nothing over and above the crushing, crushing.
And that's what?
Five fifty. And so that's what we'll be paying for ours once they move up on top. Thinking maybe twenty-five hundred, three thousand tons down there, just build our own pile. We'd basically just pay for that like we will on ourself on top. It'll give us some more crushed concrete, which we're tickled pink about because we really like it. That should be some really good product because a lot of theirs came out of streets. It should be pretty clean. So it should be actually a better product than what we're getting. I think about twenty-five hundred. I think they, they think they've got a five thousand ton pile and they're going to lose about half of it. We can have less left over. They can, they should be able to scale with the belt scale, so we shouldn't have any additional, you know, running over scale or anything like that.
Now, you say they're short on space. Are they going to belt it over our area or are they, what do we do there?
I think they're just going to allocate a temporary space for us with the, with the agreement. Then we'll get it out of there in the spring. We're, we've been talking about taking crushed concrete down into Pleasant Valley, New Union Township, areas probably where we have our, our most trouble when we get drizzly rains or sloppy roads, just for a number of reasons. But I'd like to take a bunch of it down in there and put a coat of that on many of those roads, which hopefully will improve the way they behave under water conditions.
Where's that pile sitting?
Up by Field Depot. Behind the Field Depot.
The city's got ground over the hill there.
I was going to say.
Number of piles down there. And they're just, yeah, they're running out of space down there. They did give...
Just to put it on our pile from now on and save all the...
That's actually what happened. And that may be what happens. Their, their concrete may be just coming to, to our rubble pile just because they don't have room. So it's, it's working out just swell.
Bring it up.
That's all I have.
Virginia, you have a question?
Well, back to that levy, does, how much on all property?
Sixteen and seven eight cents.
Fifteen?
Sixteen and seven eight cents. That's the, that would be the legal maximum in secondary roads.
And that's three twenty on?
Three dollars and three eight cents. I don't know where they came up with those numbers, but, uh, three, three dollars and three eight cents.
That's in addition.
That, that is, that you can levy between now and the maximum if you transfer to the secondary roads is three dollars and three eight cents.
Anything else for Dave? Thanks, Dave.
Have a good week. Bye-bye.
Thanks, David.
Okay, we'll get down to the third item on our agenda is the Freedom Rock Fiscal sixteen funding request. Come on forward.
Where do I just stand?
You can just sit down, chair there. Pull up another chair if you want, Russ.
My name is Alan Gielbauer and this is Russ Strike. And we're here representing the Freedom Rock that is located in Manning. This is a project started a couple of years ago with, with an idea from Ray Bubba Sorensen to paint a rock in each county. And the stipulation was the first one there that applied for it with a down payment of a thousand dollars, I think, qualifying to get the rock. Well, we did that. We secured the rock, got a rock from Marty Wiskus and had it hauled over there. And basically, we started with a rock like this. And then we had a, we had a, a raising ground, got some money donated to have that rock moved. We then come up with, Heath Danner, went to him and he came up with, basically this page is just a ground floor, but that was our goal, to make it look like that. And last fall, I put a picture of it, and this, this is what we've accomplished so far. So I'm moving kind of faster. If anybody's got questions, be sure and ask.
I guess for these guys' sake, we should probably go around and do introductions just so they know who.
Oh, sure.
Go around, go ahead, Gene.
Neil Baugh.
Marty Danzer.
Mark Beardmore.
Pete Scheller. You guys are with who, Legion or?
Uh, and this is, this is basically a county project.
Okay.
I am the commander of VFW in Manning. Russ is the quartermaster, but that really has no bearing on this except for veterans who are interested in this.
Sure.
Anyway, I'll just, I'll just, I'll show some more pictures. I took these this morning thinking it'd be, I was going to do it over the weekend and it started snowing. And these are the best I can help with for short notes, but these are, are photos of what we've done so far. Well, this was of the rocket that's done up to this point. And I wanted to note the Carroll County one there.
This isn't on a Manning rock, it's a Carroll County rock.
Every, every rock in every county has, has their...
It's right on the highway there. That's your...
Yeah, I've been over there.
Yeah, I've seen it.
Every rocky zone has their county name on it, jumping through.
Is this by the house barn?
This is by the house barn. The house barn sits over here. This is looking into Manning.
It's a little park there.
Right over Little Creek there.
Roadside park there.
It used to be Willow Creek.
Yeah.
It's a heritage park now, I think. The Manning Community Foundation owns it, which is not affiliated with Manning. It's part of the, part of the heritage park, heritage. I wanted to point out that everything you see on this picture is paid for. Flight poles, the benches, the painting, the pavers.
The moving of the rock.
Yeah. Everything today is paid for. But we've kind of pushed our luck in the Manning area to get what we did. And our goal is all on just to have the county help with this. And we're not getting very good response from the other towns. And, and maybe rightly so, it is in Manning. We feel that this will be a tourist attraction because there's a rock in Guthrie Center, in Kimbleton, Earling, Manila, Manning, Sack City. There's going to be car clubs, motorcycle clubs that are going to, going to go around, take a Sunday afternoon or a weekend, any of these sort of things. We're hoping we've got the nicest location. Maybe they'll stop and spend some time there. I don't know. But that's, that's one of the goals. What, what we want to do yet. Oh, get down to your detail. We don't have any of this done. And it's in the front, as you, as you... Can we, we need landscaping. We need a parking area. We need a kiosk, which I've got a picture of. What have we got, an idea we can change?
Can I see that picture right there?
Here's, here's something we're looking at. And the idea here is, is maybe something central that'll explain the rock, the location, side windows. Maybe we'll put county information in it. We will put county information in it. And these can be updated. The middle one probably keeps pretty basic. Explaining, I don't know if you noticed the trestle? It's probably in there. The trestle is unique to Manning. This is a picture of, of the bridge from the north end of Manning. What makes this unique is it's only one of two in Iowa that was guarded during World War II. So that's what made it a military significance. We're not sure why, except for the length of it. And there was, two railroads ran underneath it, which maybe if, if they sabotage on that bridge, would put every railroad out. And there's local people that'll tell you that there was troop trains run through there and ammunition trains and that kind of thing. So the bridge is unique. The rest of it is firefighter EMS and you can't see it very well, but it is policemen. So we, we've kind of touched that part of the, the freedom. It's all about freedom. The other side of it. We've got basically the, I'm not going to go through them, but the basic units, Army, Marine, you picked it in there. To get to the point, I've got some, I've got some estimates here for what it's going to take. The biggest one is landscaping, eleven thousand. Basically, we're, we're ten thousand short to finish this project way it needs to be finished. And that's a round number, I know, but where did I put those? We've, we've got a, have you seen that balance sheet? I've got a balance sheet. It explains everything, everything we've done so far that it's in here somewhere.
You know, pledges and expenses so far, I know.
We've had, we've had tremendous help in the Manning area with pledges and in-kind, like maybe rock or, or donate labor, that sort of thing. So...
So can you tell us about what you've invested?
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's what I was looking for here. We've, we've, so far, we've invested twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand, okay.
So the whole project would roughly be about a thirty thousand dollar...
Thirty thousand. And here's one other thing I wanted to show you. This, this project, and see, these things we need money for too. This is a picture of Lake Park, Iowa. It's up west of Spirit Lake or Okoboji. If you look at it kind of close, they spent sixty thousand on that project. Here we go. I'll just hand you the back page. If you want, if you want to itemize things, I've got that too. This is not up to date. I had a meeting with the city clerk, or mainstream Manning clerk. Everybody snowed in, bringing you out of town. But as of now, we've got a balance of about five hundred, give or take. So a lot of these are received, there's some pledges. A lot of the pledges we've received are, which we're not on here. I don't, this is last fall's report. And I intended to have another one, but I intended to have two or three more guys up here to, if you can, if you want to. But this is, we're keeping very detailed records on this, what we spent. But this is not up to date.
Are you passing around the, the donation list?
Yeah.
Alan, is that, that, who's contributed?
Pledge.
Pledge.
Some of it's pledge, some of it's in kind. We have people donate rock, you know, not money, but...
Sure.
Things like that. The lights were donated from Dave Wurzer. Down by Will.
Sure.
Go ahead. I don't know how, I don't want to ask for a dollar amount, but I want to tell you that we're ten thousand short of our goal. And I can't stress enough, it's, it's supposed to be a county rock.
Okay. We were pretty adamant about that, about having the county rock printed on the rock and then just one Manning rock. We were accused of that right up front, you know, and that wasn't, that's not the case. We did not want that.
We have invited, when we, every, we'd have a meeting on this, we invited the other towns to join us. And Coon Rapids was probably, came the most. A couple of ladies come up from down there, but...
Wanted input on the painting on the rock, what goes on the rock, you know, they were...
We wanted to include everybody. We weren't getting too good of a response. That's why we, we came up with, well, why don't we go see the supervisors, Carroll County, because of that reason.
And City of Manning, through their economic development, was a thousand dollars. That was the extent of City of Manning's contribution?
I'm not sure. Was that pledged or is that?
Received.
Says received, yeah.
And I know the Chamber of Commerce has pledged. There's other organizations that will yet, I don't know to what degree.
But once again, the City of Manning was just one thousand dollars.
Probably to get us started, maybe they...
And it says it came out of economic development. Is that out of their, what fund?
Fund there? There was...
It says economic development. Would that, would that be Main Street?
We received one grant from an arts and council. And see, I'm not the one that works on this, but yeah, I wanted to come up here, there's no in. And so she's not here to explain some of that stuff. If you like, we can come back with a more detailed program.
So what, you got four thousand seventy-nine nineteen here from the Freedom, Freedom Rock fundraiser?
We did have a fundraiser, not last summer, two summers ago to get us started. So it's not like we haven't, it's still, we raised twenty thousand so far. Okay. It's too bad that's not the current, there's some changes.
On the state level with the home base Iowa, is there any funding available through that? Have you checked into that?
Probably haven't checked every avenue, but we've, we've, the Renzi Trust and the Timmerman Trust have not been through.
Okay.
So we've, we've tried that way too. And maybe we worded wrong, I don't know, but we're trying things like that.
Yeah.
We did get one grant. I don't know if it's on here or not. Yeah, right here, grant for thirty-seven fifty.
You did not get any from the Timmerman or?
No, that really, that's just being of management. But we did, so...
Are you getting any support from the local legions going to their cities?
Yes. The only one for sure is Arcadia. Sent us somebody, I did the same thing there what I did here. The other posts I haven't done yet because, that was the same night as our VFW meetings, so I can't get down there. And the other ones, we intended to do, I know we've sent them, talked to people in the groups or any, which I know it's the same as going to a meeting and presenting them.
How well do either one of you know Don Grant straight here in Carroll? Don and, and Bruning, Mike Bruning, who's now deceased, you know, they put Veterans Park together. I was part of that on a much smaller scale. Those guys did the lion's share of that. That was well over a hundred thousand dollars to put that memorial up. It's just absolutely beautiful. And of course, the City of Carroll was able to participate in a lot of in-kind because it was on their city park. And, but, you know, they raised, you know, so much of that. And I know that the Legion and the VFW had a lot to do with it as well too, but much of it was just, you know, charitable donations. And I know that they, you know, like, the county didn't participate, you know, in that one. There's a lot of great veteran memorials out there and I just...
Have you ever been to Manning?
Oh, of course.
Oh, okay.
Which day?
I was on that board, the memorial wall there, right, right north of Chevy Diner there. I was on that board. And that was like fifty or sixty thousand. What we did there is, is sold, sold the names for, I think, thirty-five dollars a piece. And we raised that money that way along with donations.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm aware of that. But that's a city project, or I guess, for this would be a city project. This is located outside of City and Livingston Manning, I think. I'm not positive, I haven't checked, but I was told it. Because it's either Manning Community property, which is their foundation, which is probably part of the house barn thing. So that's what I didn't want to, that's what we're trying to do is explain that, we don't want this to associate with Manning per se.
County budget.
Because it is a county project, that's why we're here. Otherwise, I understand. So Manning's progressive. Usually you have a fundraiser, you go to the fire station, they've got a new one down there. A lot of fundraising's well done now. The memorial wall there. Main Street Manning project, yeah. And they're doing another one, trying to. So the people of Manning are very generous compared to the rest of the county. And I understand Manning will probably benefit more from this than Coon Rapids or Arcadia. But the people stop here, and they do. I, I farm right across the road here and I'll be here all afternoon, every day. Somebody will stop there just for a minute or two, but they always stop and look.
When you pitched it to the City of Manning and you'd use the, you know, the tourism, you know, promote tourism, you know, they, I'm not sure what they are doing currently with their local option sales tax fund, but perhaps something like that would be a perfect fit.
We can do that, but on the other hand, it's a county project. Yeah, I don't want to be stuck on that, but the people... stuck on that, but the people of Manning, organizations in Manning have been very helpful. I have not pitched it to the City of Manning yet, although they're well aware. We used the Main Street Manning name for fundraising because of the five oh.
One C three nonprofit status.
So they had a tax-free deal. VFW post does not. It has, it's nonprofit, but we're not, we're five oh three C, something else. The national organization is the five oh one or whatever. So anyway, that's what we said. Yes, there's ever, to answer your question, there's other avenues. And we'll, we'll pursue them. And one of the, and one of the things that we could probably use local help with again, is once this project is completed and paid for, there's maintenance. And it's real tough to get money for maintenance because the project's done, people will walk away and say, well, it's done. So we do need, on top of these expense, maybe a maintenance contingency there.
Yeah, well, the Main Street actually had the flag go down here, remember, or something like that, seven hundred dollars for.
Yeah.
All that projects, we just don't figure it out.
That's never figured in. But we got it done. We got the money raised.
And, and, you know, there's always maintenance, so. Any other questions for Russ or Alan?
So you said you don't really have a dollar figure in mind, just that you're about ten thousand.
Yeah, you know, I, I come to you and say, we need ten thousand dollars. You're like, wow, that's a lot. We appreciate that. But that's where we're sitting right now. And so you got an idea of, if you just chose to help, you know, any percentage of that would be appreciated. Anyway, if you have any questions, you know, you'd all be, okay, do appreciate your time.
Okay, thanks Alan, thanks Russ.
Appreciate your time.
Good project. We'll say that.
Okay, we'll go down to the fourth. Okay, we can do that. We'll go down to the sheriff's budget next. Doug?
As you said, she put me in whenever you put me in, whatever it, whatever worked.
Go ahead.
Morning Doug.
How are y'all?
Good.
Beautiful day. Still on the ground.
If you don't have to go outside.
Do you have to deal with much?
No, we didn't have to, you know.
People stayed off the roads.
I'm going to start out with the sheriff one.
The first one's general basic, right?
Yeah. Yep. Revenues are basically somewhat the same as, as, mileages, that basically, if you want me to go through them all, unless you have some questions, are basically somewhat the same. Weapons permit, maybe more because of two thousand sixteen comes around the corner. That's when they get to start renewing their permits. Could be a lot more coming in. I don't know yet, so. Salaries are up, you know, because of the two point five.
Well, wait, wait. And I was going to call you, but I just looked at this last night.
Yeah.
I didn't want to call you when I looked at it. You probably chewed me out. Why is there so much increase there? I mean, when we went through it, you looked at that. That's maybe six point five percent. Did you shift something around or?
No.
And I, I had a time to ask Courtney about it. She didn't know, and I just.
She, Courtney gave me a sheet that basically that I figured off of. And what I figured off of, I went with the two point two five, or the two point five. And.
But you didn't add any more people on it?
No. Well, I was going to tell you, that was on the end of it. Three more people.
We'll have to look at the worksheets you gave me and maybe just.
I mean, I want to reduce the stakes or something.
Yeah, could you go?
Courtney gave me a sheet.
One forty-seven, one forty-nine, and one fifty-four to two ten.
What half of that sheet that she gave me was a two point two.
Because that's all you had, when you talked to us, that was all you had put in there.
Yeah. That's all I put in there.
And that's, when I, when I.
Yeah, I didn't, I guess I never noticed that until now, but.
I found last night, and there's another place that, there's over here.
I was on, on this.
Now that you might shift some people on, the rest can, part-time.
I did, yeah. And that's the only time that it says. Yeah.
Continue on with.
But that, if that was the case, Courtney gave me a sheet with everybody's salary on it. I went in with the two point two five, added that, you know, broke it into that, so you'll be able to.
Just make sure I put the right number in that you gave me, so we'll just have to look that again and see.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to tie it to me. I just, I think there's an issue there.
Okay.
And I quite.
Two and a half percent won't be one hundred and fifty-seven thousand.
Yeah.
And, and going, just like I say, going down through, the only one that basically, I went down to motor vehicle equipment. I had thirty-five thousand in there last year. I've got it back to thirty, thirty thousand. Hopefully, gas stays down.
Does that fuel and repairs?
Yeah, that's, yeah, basically what that is. So I went down there, got one vehicle in for, also the general basic. The other one is, I went through here. We have a user taser, but we, I talked to my man the other day, and he basically said that we've had them for less than years. He's, obviously, they're going to have to replace them. A definite asset for our department, or also for the city. I really, you know, I know that there's some issues that have been brought up and has gone through our legislative. Like I said.
What line is, what line is that?
Taser.
Down about.
About half was down.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is.
Page two. What's the difference between, you know, one, account one thousand and ten sixty? Salaries, regular employee.
Okay, that.
On page two.
This is a.
Deputies.
Deputy salaries on that one. That, that's mine. Ken and Shauna's.
Okay, so administration, and then this is.
And then this is the deputy's.
The deputies, I'm sorry. Admin. And then deputies. Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, that one seems more in line.
Yeah, that one's.
Yeah.
Yeah. That one's done, so we know exactly what that's going to run us today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Rural services. Basically, all the same in the rural services. We have also in the motor vehicle, we have thirty-five thousand. I moved, kicked it back thirty thousand. So there's a decrease there. Not much in that.
See, most of it's, it's, it's in line too.
Yeah.
I don't know what would happen last year.
I don't know.
Yeah. Definitely not right. We did have one, we had a part-time person in there, and then we didn't go full-time. I don't know why they were taking that.
Well, that's up twenty-three. That could be, could be a mistake.
Because she had explained that one to me.
Yeah, I understood that one.
Yeah. But on the other one, I have no idea. And we have part-time, thirty thousand put into five thousand. So we have a few, but I don't foresee it. Going through here is basically a lot of that is all union stuff that we have to go through, and we have to follow through. So there's not, no big changes in there. Medical. Hopefully, we'll have our problem out of the tail by the time the budget comes around the next time. It's tendered on now, it's in May, and that's how this category. Yeah, it's our medical. Now, you did have to increase that just a little bit, but not, I had like five thousand, I increased it up to six thousand.
Hopefully, it plays out.
Hopefully, yeah. The thing is, we'll just have to watch it to make sure, but that's a, that's a problem. But we can't, it's hard to figure out how. We've got to, you know, we have, the problem is, if we have an issue that comes about, we better talk to the magistrate, try to get them out of the road. We don't need them there, so. Have a good relationship with the union, that's basically it. Or not the union, but definitely, they can always come and assist us in a lot of situations like that also.
Is that food preparation?
That is, you know, it varies, you know, that's, I might go back on that, but you know, varies how many people we have in there. It's been a lifesaver. I mean.
Doing their own.
We've cut down a lot of costs on that because of the.
Food's expensive. I mean, it's, we're seeing it at the daycare, we're seeing it everywhere.
Meat products are so expensive. We have to figure so much.
See it at home.
We made it with Arcadia on, or Arcadia, yeah, Arcadia locker, and they'll basically send us a thing on, on Monday and say, okay, we got this special here. So they're very good.
Well, you probably qualified to use that.
Hush.
Yeah.
Hush money.
Hush money.
Hush money.
That is.
Denison.
Yeah, we do get that sometimes in a while. It's not the best, but.
Is that what you're saying? Don't get me started.
I'm not even, I'm not even.
When I was, when I was a naughty boy, I didn't get everything I wanted.
Well, I understand.
This isn't the city hotel.
Is that an answer? Well, did you guys, speaking of that, why we're up, did you guys get the information on that from the jail inspection?
Yeah, yeah, I got that. Yeah, we came up good on that.
Anything that you needed to. You know, it was a situation that happened around at the same time, is the separation of, of bringing people into fingerprinting. You know, we have prisoners in jail. And we, Gene and I talked about it. It's a hard situation to get about around, except unless we want to go out building a jail.
I said, I suggest we buy another fingerprint before we do that.
We've got enough of what we have.
So, any questions on the, on corrections? Like I said, there's no change, hardly any changes on that at all. Hopefully, the, like I said, the medical is one of the issues that we have. Communications.
Your salaries on that.
On which one?
On the corrections.
Yeah.
Is there a reason why it's a?
Well, and.
That's.
From made it part-time into full-time.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
I must have missed that. Sorry.
Hard for us to find people, good people come in and work part, or part-time down in a jail. And, and we have a good bunch right now going through there, and, so.
Virginia, Virginia, you have a question?
Your contract law income, where does that go in? In the general basic?
Yes. Yeah. We've already went through with the city on this. We're, we're going to try to make up some in the part-time. We've got two part-time people down there right now. And we're going to send, start sending some of them to some schools. We need to keep on a regularity with that. We keep that up to date so if something happens, hopefully, we had a lot of sicknesses and operations this time, and. Our training is up to plus.
Yeah.
Yeah. That one, one next to, yeah. That should be.
Closer to half.
Yeah, exactly. That is, they pay half.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, that should be.
It's throwing the last line off. It's like, it's last line way off, so. So why, Doug, are the part-time salaries and overtime up considerably?
Because, that's what I'm saying. We got a lot of, of vacations coming in. They had some people's medical.
Issues.
It's been, it had part-time, I'm going to fill all, that's what.
Current.
Yeah.
Please come out supplemental.
Wow.
So that's just showing activity that actually go away, so we better put that in.
And this radio has got, there's some new stuff together if you're right. What are you talking about?
Which one are we talking about?
Just thirteen years.
Yeah.
It's just, or something like that.
That's what they, they will, they put in there for the.
Yeah. But that gets reimbursed through a past program.
Yes, yeah.
I just want to make sure you get it.
I know that it's pretty fast, but like I said, I'm not, I just, there's nothing, a lot of drastic changes on that. Just communications, a lot of that is, we have to make up a lot of. Training.
Something.
For the town center.
They got, wait, that way, so that way's.
Would it be, so then would it be four thirty-two actually less that two oh three or one seventy-eight?
It'd be less fifty thousand, the way I get it.
Yeah. Yes.
Well, total is kind of change to four thirty-two.
So then wouldn't.
Half of that would come from the city.
Which would be two oh three roughly. Well, I'm showing from the city, one seventy-eight, and then twenty-five from nine-one-one reimbursement.
That's for fifteen.
Well.
Do they pay monthly, the city?
Quarterly, yeah.
Quarterly. So this would be probably two quarters. They're ninety-eight, right?
Yeah, but there isn't even, there isn't even a balance.
So it's not even quite, yeah, and that's what.
There's no revenue.
That's why it's throwing that four thirty-two way out of whack. Because there's nothing to offset it there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You with me there?
And I think, didn't we say the other day, we were going up to thirty, tried to go to thirty-five on, on the nine-one-one?
Yeah, he was talking about, he was pointing, yeah, there may be.
Did we talk about that the other day?
Yeah, I've got, I've got that budget here. Yeah.
I think that one, we were going up to thirty-five.
Right.
And I'll talk again about the nine-one-one. Also, I think there's going to be a market that they were talking about going through, nine-one-one is hopefully going through that, some of that money being used for salaries. That would be really nice if it was.
And the rest of these are just to, is, is I first on.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand.
Yes.
Yeah, it was thirty. Yeah, thirty-five, thirty, forty.
Thirty.
So does the city pay half of?
And the rest of these are just to.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it was thirty, yeah, thirty-five, thirty, forty, yeah.
So does the city pay half of the total expenses, or half of the total expenses less than thirty?
Less than thirty.
Cause that's kind of still my.
Yeah.
I just caught that last night.
Something messed up there.
I didn't know that.
Doug, the other thing I was gonna bring up, at eleven-thirty, we're gonna have a call in to Verizon, they're gonna add some additional stuff onto the tower. Do you wanna be a part of that conversation today?
Seven-thirty?
Yeah, if you have time. We'll see what, they wanna add the, add the additional equipment on that tower. And we're just in the preliminary stages of it.
Any questions?
Yeah, thanks Doug.
Thanks Doug.
Okay, with that, we'll go down to next item is environmental health budget review. Carrie?
Hi, Carrie. I don't think I have any surprises. I do think this time we talked about the county again. Maybe not for this particular fiscal year, but definitely for the next fiscal year. We do have a committee with Crawford County. Steve Olmer and Eric Stiebel there with Crawford, and Mark and Dan, and Dan is here, probably you know. Need to get together and discuss, but we don't probably need to do that till maybe mid-year before we get to work on a budget for the next fiscal year. So for right now, it's the same. I think those need to come up a little bit, so we can discuss that at some point. We go through here, if you have any questions, sewage tank and disposal, I dropped a little bit. We were not as active in that area this last year. We were probably half of what we normally are for a normal year. I can't necessarily explain why. Less buildings, less sales affect all of that. Otherwise, everything is pretty close, but it looks like I have to rate on a little bit, we were fairly active with rate on. The emergency preparedness is always questionable. Now that they've combined the emergency preparedness money into a coalition. The coalition has named me as their fiscal advisor, so there is some funding allotted to the fiscal advisor. But that doesn't necessarily mean that I have to take it all. Especially if there's projects that that money needs to be spent on. I think we've got fifteen percent of about fifty-five thousand dollars that we could. Tap into. But we've already spent a good chunk of that money on stuff that's, that's needed at a hospital and public health. So, I threw that money in there, it looks like a lot, cause we got this forty-two hundred and ten dollars that was from last. Grant money that we did tap into, just to get that money spent. But if that money can be spent elsewhere, I figure I'm already being paid, I don't need necessarily fifteen percent unless I earned it. Or if it's not being used somewhere else. So I did put some money in there, you can see in the past, we've gotten no money for emergency preparedness, so I tried to stay conservative. Up a little bit. Salaries, honestly, two and a half. Insurance. Everything else I either left the same or I dropped. There was some discussion on motor vehicles, which is the second to last line item on the second page. I started out putting zero in there, but after some discussion with Mark and Dean and the Board of Health. We do have about sixteen thousand dollars sitting in a capital account for a new vehicle purchase. If we were to have to use that sixteen thousand, then we would be down to nothing. So it was one of those, do we just keep putting a little bit in? Cause if we ever had to take that sixteen thousand out, then if I needed something, you know, if I put in a thousand a year, it's gonna take me ten years.
To make it better.
Build up again, so I'd rather, I guess thought, my thought process was to keep putting a little bit in, just to keep it in there just in case. If you've got another thought on that. Be happy to hear it.
Yeah, we had some discussion on that. I, I think going forward, there's some efficiencies can be made there. I won't say anymore but that, but. We talked a little bit about that.
Any other questions, comments for Carrie?
Do you wanna float that revenue side suggestion that you had? As far as, again, maybe, you know, not a decision made today, but something we can, you know, look forward in terms of those transfers?
The time of transfer for well.
Mm-hmm.
The environmental impact on that as well?
Yes.
That's probably. Is equal.
You know that we have a time of transfer on sewer, on-site wastewater. We used to be one of very few counties that had their own time of transfer inspection program, until the state decided to make it mandatory statewide. Now it's become state law, but for, for many years, we were proactive on that time of transfer for septic. Time of transfer for wells, on the other hand, was something that we provided free water testing. But we never made it mandatory that if there was a well on a rural property, that the, that well be inspected. And required it to be tested, testing was done voluntarily. And done in order to hopefully let the buyer know what kind of water they were getting out of a well. But we never required that anything be done with abandoned wells, or even wells that didn't test very well. There are counties around us, Guthrie County, Auden County, Shelby County, that does have a time of transfer for wells. The well program is one of our biggest revenue getters. In that the grants to counties program allows us a large amount of money every year to test wells and plug abandoned wells. We have in the past been able to spend all that money until that money doubled. And now we are not able to spend it using voluntary means. So, we'll, we are still doing water testing and well plugging, but it's all being done at the homeowner's request, or realtor's request, or bank request. Time of transfer for wells would give us more access to that grants to counties money. Because obviously, we aren't gonna get the money if we aren't doing the work. So the time of transfer would potentially not only get rid of abandoned wells that are contaminating our groundwater and our safety issues. But we would get more wells tested. But it would be a requirement and not based on voluntary action. So we have floated around whether or not we should create a new ordinance requiring time of transfer for private wells when a property is sold. We still do free water testing, and it would still be free, even if we made it mandatory. But it's good information, a lot of these buyers are buying these wells, they don't know what they're getting, they're coming from town, they're used to city water. You know, they get a well water. And they don't necessarily know that their well is contaminated, because nobody required that it be tested. So that would be a mandatory under a new ordinance, that any wells on the property would be required to be tested. And if they were not testable, or they were deemed abandoned, then they would be required to be plugged. So we floated that around. But, you know, so creating a new ordinance and a new law is always, you know.
Have you talked to John at all as far as drafting something, putting something together?
I have something, I actually have something together already, it's, it's exactly what Guthrie County uses down in Cass, Auden, they dare. I didn't bring it, cause I didn't, wasn't planning on talking about it today, but it's not long. You know, it's a very short ordinance, it basically just says that, you know, if there are wells on the property, they have to even be tested. Or they have to be plugged, but they're not gonna be used. So the concern is, obviously, you know, plugging wells when people don't want them plugged. Nobody's gonna argue over a free water test. It's, it's the abandoned ones that.
Are the issue.
That are gonna be, that would be the issue, and I don't think they'd be a huge issue, but they, they would become an issue for some.
Been doing that Guthrie County for a long time.
Yes.
And it would be Carroll County making a step towards cleaner water?
Absolutely. And I took the same ordinance to Crawford County. The Crawford County Board of Health, they were on board with it. And I had told the supervisor representative to that board that I would come and talk to them. It's very hard to have one county doing one thing and another county doing something else.
I'm sure it is.
So it would be very nice if, you know, everybody, we're all on the same page, because I don't wanna enforce some laws here and, and not here. And that's why it wasn't septic for a long time, we had a time of transfer in septic, Crawford didn't have anything, so.
Then the statewide took care of all that.
Right, and so now they're catching up.
Right.
I mean, we are doing more septic than Crawford now, because of the time of transfer, cause they didn't require it before, whereas we did.
Something I didn't ask you last week is, what's the chances, I'm asking to predict the future, of course, but what's the chances of the, of the state making this mandatory eventually? I mean, in light of the way things are.
They don't really talk about wells so much.
Just septic?
Well, septic has a greater impact on our environment with everybody dumping into our waterways and, you know, so. They start with one thing, and eventually they'll get to it, maybe.
I didn't expect anybody to, you know, take any action on it today, and I'm sorry, I thought maybe we had talked about we'd at least float it today. And, you know, see what the board thought, but we don't reach any decision today, but I think it's a good thought starter to take up here, you know, in the spring.
Anything else for Carrie?
That's it.
Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Carrie.
Not comfortable with me. I didn't feel a little hot. It's only been, what, thirteen years?
Thanks, Carrie.
Thanks.
Thanks, Carrie. Okay, next we'll move down to the home care aides budgets, Megan?
Hi, Megan.
Good morning. Morning, Megan.
Good morning.
So how's it out there this morning?
Um, when I got there, just as soon as the door was rolled on my knee, so it was sticky, trying to get the door open. Um, they were in the.
Moving in the snow?
Yeah. So, I made it in.
Cause I know we talked about that. Okay.
Yeah. Alrighty, um, for the revenue side, I did drop a couple of them. It's hard to say with our clients, sometimes our numbers, which way, I can usually say for my confidence, like we stick around a hundred clients. And that goes up and down a little bit. But I did drop some of the revenues, not knowing exactly what's gonna happen. The home care, or, excuse me, the care related contract that we get, the sixty-five thousand that I kept. Their, their cost is going up this year, and I just got it back that they approved the new contract. So, that's going up two dollars, effective March one. So I'm expecting that to be more, this more than sixty-five thousand. But I, I left it there, just, I'm not sure if they'd accept the contract as far as the dollar now, but they didn't, it's a day with it, so. That I'm thinking is gonna be more, but I did leave it at sixty-five thousand.
What, what would you expect it to be? Cause if, when we get to the final number, I think it'd be helpful to have. I mean, would, would it?
I would say closer to seventy.
Okay.
Our, sorry, I should have started at the top, the very first one, the home care aid service fees. That is what clients that we have that pay a partial fee. To us for the services, I dropped that a little bit, and we've lost a couple that pay. But we do have some more referrals too, so that, it's a game. Knowing what we're gonna get for sure, where we're gonna sit with our numbers. We did lose the, the line five-three-three-oh-seven. That is an ID, it's a CDAC waiver that we were providing, and the state changed some things regarding that, and requirements and that. So, there was nine thousand budgeted, and there's nothing for this next fiscal year, cause we don't provide individual CDAC.
It's got nine thousand in there.
So it's gonna be zero.
Oh, yeah, no, that should be zero.
Should be zero, okay.
Cause that is a service that we don't provide anymore, and that's a waiver service, they're changing to individual CDAC providers, so. Elegancy, that's not something we do. Elder Bridge, I actually just got the contract this morning to fill out, so. I really hope, I glanced there quick before I came up, and they're kinda asking number-wise, as far as projected numbers for Elder Bridge for this next, next fiscal year. And I'm gonna really bump that up, and I'm hoping they're gonna look at that and maybe give us some more. I know they're on a limited budget too, but hoping we'll get some more from Elder Bridge. So the revenues are down compared to this year. Donations, I have to say there, we usually get something from Kuna Patsy and Manny for donations.
Last year on Elder Bridge, you did quarter one, thirty-four. Am I looking at the right one?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I was kinda thinking the same thing.
Yeah, you know, this year you're gonna drop, drop what we actually brought in by almost ten thousand dollars. You see that trend?
I'm hoping that.
Yeah, okay.
Well, it was, it was thirty, thirty-four last year, and thirty-one the year before that, and thirty-five the year before that.
Yeah, so.
After that, you're, okay.
Your, your data's all the way.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah. Unless maybe they've made their contribution for the year.
Oh, yes, excuse me, they did, they did make their contribution for this, for this fiscal year.
It's a one-time donation, right? Contribution, we should call it. But yeah, see, it's.
It's up, and they did, I just finished spending the last of that money, of the Elder Bridge money. So we did get more than the thirty thousand, but that's, we're done for the year now.
Sure.
Minus contributions.
Okay, but I think what we're suggesting, Megan, is perhaps we take another look at that twenty-five thousand expected revenue, unless Elder Bridge has given you some other news. Because traditionally, you've had thirty-five thousand, thirty-one thousand, and thirty-four thousand.
Can I be comfortable with saying thirty thousand again?
Okay, I, I think so too.
Yeah.
Just predicting a decrease. Plus there's some reason for that.
And we do have the option typically in March to do reallocation, or they do reallocation then. And that's up in the air as far as what we could get. then, and that's up in the air as far as what we could get. So that could bring in March too.
And then the fourth item lined down, that's a service fee that comes from where? I understand the first one is from client's ability to pay, but where does-
Um, the, the third one down is our for elderly labor, or the fourth one.
Yeah, fourth one is what I'm asking.
Yep, that's our for elderly labor, that we bill for the state.
And that comes from who?
From the state.
From the state.
Mm-hmm. That one, and then the two down from that, the ill and handicap, that's another fee.
Okay.
And the reason for the drop on the ill and handicap waiver, we have three individuals on that waiver, and one individual that we spend quite a bit of time with, her health is not so good. So the bulk of the money in that pot there comes from her. I don't know how much longer she'll be around to count on her. And typically, our waiver that we get for the referrals come under the for elderly waiver, so.
Yeah, that's, one seems to be sliding downwards also. Fourteen to twelve to fifty-six for the year.
And on the expense side, the only thing, I dropped a couple lines, the only one that I did up was the mileage line based off of the projected fifty-seven and a half cents. If that would change or something different, that would go down, but that's the only line I did increase. Oh, and that one, and then I was telephone backs. Seems like that's going up every month. So I have that one a little bit as well.
But you didn't raise the mileage, it stayed safe, right?
Board of Supervisors, Marty speaking?
That's for hers. That's, yeah, that's mine. You go off the, everybody else's. And then this is for-
Oh, dear, okay.
Yeah, that's for all the aides, and then I, yeah, I follow in down there for salary and health insurance.
Now the salaries, did you keep that two and a quarter? Is that two and a quarter?
Yeah, for salaries, I figured at two and a quarter.
You did?
Okay.
So that's a two and a quarter right now. All right, we're going to make a decision on that later today.
It's so hard to judge our numbers for the future.
Clients can vary from day to day. Any other questions for Megan, or comments? Okay. Thank you, Megan.
All right, yep.
Thanks Megan.
Okay, we'll go down to the next item, is the fiscal sixteen auditor budget review. Courtney?
All right, I have just several. You start with the Board of Supervisors first.
Okay.
I didn't put anything in revenue because we haven't collected anything for the last few years. Salaries, I used the comp board recommendation, near group amounts. Slight change in the insurance, just because we had a supervisor with family coverage, and now we have one with a spouse, so there is a lot, that is a lot less. I don't think I made any other changes. So any question or discussion on the supervisor budget?
Pretty steady.
I can't think of anything.
Do general services next. On salaries, I use two and a half. Budget for the head of maintenance and our potential hire, we can get somebody higher there. Kept overtime the same, and of course, the adjustments for bike and hypers due to the raise. Insurance is quite a bit different, and the reason for that is, since we don't know who we're going to hire, I did budget for a family plan, so that number could be adjusted later. And I was informed that our current head of maintenance needs to add his wife and child, so we're going to, he's going to have a family plan, whereas now he just has a single. So that's the reason for the expense there. And I did make some minor lowerings, just based on what was spent in the previous couple of years, hoping to get a little more, be a little more accurate with the expenses. So if you look at, it's about, let more than half down the page, under building maintenance and repair, then there's an M there, that is now review. That's the money we've always budgeted for repairs out there. We did lower that a little bit, kept some in there in case we do have to do anything, but we're not quite sure what's going to happen out there, but that money will be there. The line below that, it's a lot less, and the reason for that is, that is the courthouse, and we did a budget amendment to add some air conditioning and some other things in Carl's office, and that's already been paid for, so we lowered it back to what it kind of normally was. Let's really get the changes on there. Is there questions on the general services?
No, no questions.
Next one I'll do is the capital, and it'd be the capital that funds in courthouse projects, fifteen hundred buildings. So last year, we budgeted fifteen, and we spent about forty-nine hundred roughly, and that was for the stores over at the Ricky Building. So I'm proposing to put another fifteen in capital. That forty-eight, or the money that's remaining in this year's budget should cover the cost of the repairs downstairs with that drain or whatever they're going to do.
Concrete over here, yeah.
But it seems like there's always those little projects that come up, so I thought fifteen was a good amount.
We talked that day, we missed the, fifteen doesn't buy it much anymore.
No, not really.
So any questions on the capital? Okay, do the auditors' general basic budget. Let's see here. I did lower the DHS administrative reimbursement because the forty-four is what they told me they were going to give us. How they arrived at that number, I'm not exactly sure, it was just on a letter that they sent me. I don't know if it's based upon the expenses we've given them in the previous year, so it's been fifty-six the last two budgets. We only collected thirty-one eight this year, so I have forty-four there. And the mental health, community service fund allocation, there's been money budgeted in that line for the last three years, but we've never gotten any money. And I can't find any history on it because we never collected anything, so I didn't put anything in there because we've never received anything. Salary, I used mine at what the comp board recommended and the board supervisors approved, and two and a half on, it's Emily and Joanne that are paid out of this fund. I have a little bit in there for overtime. And then under insurance, there is a slight increase due to the ten percent. Otherwise, I did lower the office data, made it sound a lot, but it was seventy-seven oh-five, and I lowered it to sixteen, sixty-seven hundred because we replaced the computers in our office that had to be. That's already been done, so. And office equipment is, any questions on this budget?
Don't have any.
Okay, last one I have is the general supplemental auditors' budget. And this budget we're planning for will have a school election, city election. No, I'm sorry. How about, sorry, school, city, and a primary. And then I budgeted for two specials in case, because I, we had three one here, but hopefully we don't have two, but we might. So the, in the revenue, you can see the city and the school, that the, because they pay for their elections, so that's the reimbursement from them. And then also, if we would have two specials, that would be the reimbursement for those. And Ashton is paid out of the supplemental line, so it's two and a half percent on that. I did put a little bit in there for overtime. It used to be under salaries, part-time, but now that there's four of us in the office, I don't foresee ever having to pay part-time hours. So the overtime would cover, in case for an election, we have to work Saturdays sometimes in the evenings. I think I kept-
I'm trying to follow.
Yeah, I'm, I think I had, there was a chance that there might be another person added to that policy, but it's been, she let me know it'd just be a cycle for next year, so. And not too much, too many changes. A little bit more expense overall because of the primary that we're going to have. Pretty similar to the thirteen-fourteen budget, yeah, pretty similar to the thirteen-fourteen budget, or the twelve-thirteen budget as far as activity. Any questions on that?
I don't have anything. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
No.
Thanks, Courtney. Okay, with that, we'll go down to the seventh item on the agenda, is to approve the plat. We do have one plat today, that's in Eden Township, section twenty-three. Okay, got a motion on the floor, need a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the plat. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Same thing. Okay, next item, we'll go down to county mileage reimbursement.
Who put this together?
I put a sheet together that I gave to everyone.
Thanks.
There was a lot of information that was talked about last week, and I thought it'd be good if everybody had it in print when I was going to cover. A lot of this is information you already have, just calculated it out a little bit, so, I don't know, just to start discussion, is okay, Marty?
Yeah, go ahead.
Everybody's got a sheet, and that, and the first part is from a survey that was done with all the counties, eighty of them responded, nineteen out of eighty, or twenty-three percent pay the federal rate, which is fifty-seven and a half cents per mile. Sixty-one or seventy-six and a quarter percent pay less than the federal rate. So since we pay the federal rate, we obviously are in the group that pays the highest, and nobody pays more than we do. Of the eighty counties, seventy-nine of them gave us what their rate of payment was, and out of all of those seventy-nine, the average is forty-eight point seven-three per mile. The lowest is thirty cents. And then I just took the average of sixty counties that actually made a decision other than the federal rate, and they averaged about forty-six cents a mile, forty-five point nine-five. And then I picked some comments from the survey, and the survey, there's other comments in there, but some comments that I thought were applicable. And the county, Des Moines County, said the board encourages employees to use county vehicles to drive. We also try to carpool as much as possible, and that was the county that paid thirty cents a mile. Al McKee, part of their comment says, paying too much encourages people to drive their own vehicles, and for insurance purposes, they should be taking county vehicles when available, which they most often are available. That county pays forty percent. Ringel pays ten cents less than the federal rate, except for the PH Department, which is the public health. And I thought that was interesting, because our healthcare aides has got considerable discussion about it last week. Just a few other points, State Iowa pays thirty-nine cents. I know, Second Judicial District, that's what they pay, is thirty-nine cents, they're a state organization. Federal has other rates. If you're moving, you can deduct only twenty-three cents a mile for medical purposes, and if you drive for charitable reasons, you only get fifteen cents per mile. Oh, and I got another comment, I cut paste wrong here. Washington County said the use of vehicles is strongly encouraged, they pay thirty-six cents. Okay, then some comments I wanted to make is that we're looking at change in this, and it's, change never comes easy. Everybody always has a reason why you shouldn't change or something. But we're tied with nineteen other counties for the highest state rate, and I don't think that's acceptable, and it's an exact time when we could use a little leadership to do what's right. And it does, fifty-seven and a half does encourage use of private vehicles, and it's an excess cost taxpayers. So I'm not sure what the best change is, but I don't think the status quo will be acceptable. That's my opinion, or my take. So what would I suggest? Just get the conversation rolling. I hope, we'll just work together on this, and hopefully, there's four better ideas than what I have. That's all I want, each of you have a better idea than me, I'd be very happy, but I'm just going to get the ball rolling. So I would just say, well, I think we should start right now by reducing the mileage payment to eighty percent of the federal rate. I know Gene pointed out, the advantage is going to percent rather than a cents. That would get it to forty-six cents per mile. I think we should contract our insurance carrier concerning the use of county vehicles by employees and contract employees. Now, I'm going to touch on specific contract employee in a little bit. And I also think we should treat our healthcare employees differently, and there's a couple ways of doing that. And one thing I did do is I got a very exact figure of what they're getting paid for mileage. I did the calculation, what it would be if they got a lesser amount, it would cost them about four thousand dollars less income, that's a ten cents a mile, which is ten employees. It's about four hundred dollars per employee would be their loss of income if it would be lowered that much. So that is one idea, and I see the, and they would be held harmless in that fact, they would just be getting paid for doing their work rather than get paid for driving. It would be a switch. The other option is maybe do something like this other county did, and just left their healthcare workers the same and changed everybody else. And that would work out the same way. I think it's wrong right from the start that we're using mileage as a source of income. It's supposed to be a source of reimbursement. So another thought- So another thought is at some point, we should have free parking car to park at the courthouse to use by employees. I know when I go to a meeting in what city, wouldn't hurt me a bit to pop in a county vehicle and drive it, as opposed to getting fifty-seven and a half cents to me, which, since I drive, Prius is a big moneymaker for me, so I won't tell. This is a self-interest thing here. This is the county benefit, not my benefit. And I think Convict One is an example, but maybe there'll be new shared vehicle or something come up. Okay, I talked to a couple department heads about this, and the first one I talked about was, first person I talked to was Megan Owen from the healthcare aides. And I explained to her how we were sensitive to their department, because I think it's fact that they rely on their mileage for income. And I explained to her, well, how about if we lower the mileage, but adjust their salary proportional? And I gave her the same example I just gave you, where it would be $4,000 difference, and give her $400, split among employees, and as relate to how much they drive. She didn't talk to any of her employees about it, but she thought that would be just fine. That was her feeling there. Then I talked to Carrie Kersey, and what got me there, what got me, what got my attention there, is the person that does a lot of these septic inspections runs up a lot of mileage, which they get paid for. And I said, well, you've got two vehicles. Could it be possible that that contractor, and this is not a county employee, it's a contractor, Steve, he works on a contractual basis, could use a county vehicle? One of those two vehicles. And she stated how it'd be quite an inconvenience, but in some cases, it could be pulled off because he does schedule his things. He doesn't just hop in and go, he schedules it. She said she would talk to him about it. You know, I said, I encourage that. And he didn't like that at all. He didn't know if he'd want to work here if he had to come here and get a different vehicle, and he already lives in town, so he's making money off of the, and I don't know if it was because of the inconvenience, because he has the equipment at home, and he'd have to come here and get in a vehicle that has the equipment, or transfer his equipment, or if it was because of the reduced mileage, I don't know, but he did not like the idea at all. So I, I can see already that not everybody's going to just jump on this and say, oh, this is going to save our taxpayers money, let's do it. And I did not talk to our insurance carrier. I don't know even if a contracted employee. I think that's different than a supervisor or a department head taking a car. That is significantly different to have them take a county car than us. So I did not contact insurance carrier yet. That is one of my next steps, if this thing gets any gravity. Okay, that's the work I've done, the information I have, and I'm looking for four better ideas.
Just one other suggested action could be considered is that where, if needed, employees could rent a car too. You know, if, you know, some, if you say, for example, if someone's, you know, getting thirty-six dollars a day or whatever, and it includes free mileage, if they're going to be traveling over a hundred miles, that would pay the fifty-seven cents in itself. So, I mean, it, it's just a suggestion that could be considered. I mean, you still got to go through, you know, picking it up and dropping it off. There's some outfits that deliver. They're advertised on TV all the time. But it's just a thought that it could be. Neil, I, I credit you with one thing. This is, I've been a supervisor for six years, and I've been under the misunderstanding, it's my own fault, that we had to pay the mileage, the federal rate. I just wrongly assumed that's what it was. So you brought this to light for me specifically, that it's, it's optional. And, you know, I concur with what you're saying, is it seems to be that, once again, we're almost in the minority, you know, by looking at your data. Somewhat, very much in the minority. Seventy-six percent of them pay less than the federal mileage rate, so.
And of course, there were nineteen counties that didn't respond. Who knows where they are?
Right.
So it'll be tweaked a little bit. One or the other, we don't know.
Even if it was fifty-fifty, it would be, wouldn't affect it much.
Mm-hmm. And it was, the information kind of fell in our lap. We brought this up at a meeting, and then Courtney brought to my attention that the survey is just being done right now on this. And so she provided that information.
So this is a statewide?
It's an ISAC.
ISAC simultaneously was doing a survey. And so, heck, what the heck, could you, not a better time to discuss this when we have some really current, and the information is right, but it's not, we're not talking historical data from ten years ago, we're talking right now.
I need to stay. No, I can still just pull it out.
Carrie?
Yeah.
We just happened to be talking about the mileage issue.
I had her read me this. I don't know if you have a copy of that.
Okay.
That's why I asked if you wanted to stay.
Okay, no, I just, yeah, yeah, please, blue. And I'll just repeat part of what I said. I explained where I'd called you and explained that we're talking about reducing mileage, and part of the reason I talked to you is because we have a contract employee who drives a significant amount with his car. And I suggested the idea of that employee using one of your two vehicles. I stated that it could be done, but it would be quite inconvenient. He could schedule his time, but you sometimes can't schedule yours. And that he did not like the idea at all. And here's one thing I didn't ask you. I didn't know if he didn't like the idea because of the inconvenience, because he's got the equipment at his house in Carroll, and that would be much easier versus driving to courthouse and then going, or if it was the money issue. I don't know what the problem was.
It was the inconvenience.
The inconvenience, okay.
Yeah, because he keeps all the equipment, the auger, the tubes, the buckets, all that stuff, he keeps at his house. And so his thought was, is that every time he had to go out, he would have to drag it from his house, load it up here, then go, then come back, then unload back into his vehicle, and to take it back to his house. So it was an inconvenience thing. It would be inconvenient for us as well to have to work around, you know, whenever he was going to go. Because right now, he sets his own schedule. He goes when he wants, he comes back when he wants. So that would, it would be very inconvenient if we had, you know, a situation where we had to be somewhere and he had our vehicle.
Yeah, and I, I just got this, but I do see one line where we make it explicitly clear in his contract that we do not provide him a vehicle.
Right.
Is there anything else in here you want to point out, Carrie? I've just got it now.
No, I think that contract is pretty there.
It does say we pay.
It's very interface. It's just simple, and it's not.
Does it say at what rate we pay him for mileage?
Yes.
Federal. Says the federal rate, okay. All right, that's the contract here. Okay, that's fine.
But again, I have to see that.
All right, that's kind of what I explained to the board right before you walked in. Is there anything else you wanted?
Is that an annual contract?
Is there anything else you want to add to that, Carrie?
No, I don't think so. I mean, that contract, if you see something in it that, you know, it's, like I said, it's a very simple contract. It's easily changed, it's easily, you know, added to.
Is it year to year, or what?
Uh, we don't really do it every year now.
Okay.
I mean, if the situation changes.
Yeah, it is now. I was looking at it.
Talking for a moment.
Does it say changes can be made?
Obviously. I'm not worried about that. Changes could be made.
I hope it says that.
One other thing I did not do, Carrie, and maybe you did, I did not talk to our insurance agent to see what the situation would be for a contracted employee driving a county car.
I did not contact.
Okay, I'm not.
It says that the independent contractor understands this contract, maybe cancel it, but it party within two weeks.
Okay.
No notice.
Okay, that's all I mean.
All right, and I don't even know if this is a bigger issue that I don't think need to be determined by one contract employee, whether we can get this changed. I, I don't think that's the issue, so I'm not, I don't want to make, I appreciate you having brought that. I appreciate your feedback, and.
And that's not, I mean, that independent contractor's contract was probably created by Carl, because we've used it now for several people, and I doubt that any of the other independent contractors' contracts look like that one, as in that. Wherever else we have independent contracts with, their contracts probably read differently than that one.
Okay, all right, thank you, Carrie. All right. Any other ideas or suggestions?
I will say, I know what pays more in Carroll County, because they did, they paid more than federal rate to that issue ten nine eight. I don't use word that. That's, that's the issue. If you then that, I know if you wind up doing your own formulas, if you wind up giving that position. If your formula comes up with a higher than the federal rate, you've got to pay a ten nine eight, issue ten nine eight, not a ten.
Is this survey on the ISAC website?
I have the survey right here, Dean. I printed it off. And, yeah, so here's, I got all kinds of stuff written on there, but, you know, here's, here's what the survey looks like. You can just, and I've circled the ones, I believe I've circled the ones on there that paid the federal rate. Did the math. The math is all on there, and I double-checked the numbers, but, because you can cross-check it anytime you want, of course.
I guess I would suggest if we do lower it, that I would have it tied to a percentage or so. That way, we don't need to, that's changing.
And I have no problem with that at all. Gene, I know I was earlier suggesting ten cents off, and you suggested the percentage. That's fine, and I understand where he's coming from. I think it's improvement over a cent figure, in case this thing would really go either way, a long ways. Percentage would probably be more fair than a cents per gallon, which.
And I think there was a history where, years, years ago, it was about an eighty, eighty percent. The way now, it was, it was fifty-seven percent, or fifty-seven cents, and then it moved down, and now we're creeping right, there it is, right there. So it's creeping right back up again. So, I mean, here it's actually fifty-eight cents back in 'oh eight.
What's your weight?
I guess, I guess my only concern would be, in the notes that I took down, is that, I guess I have a good feeling about the gas tax going up, but, you know, ten cents. So, I mean, that's going to affect it a little bit. I'm not, I had Courtney run off the mileage report for the current year. And, you know, we talked about maybe, it's not, it has, it doesn't give the mileage specifically alone. It has, some of these, it has mileage in the wheels and, you know, figures. So you don't know what, you don't know what the mileage is. And I think Courtney said that they could probably do a better job of sorting that out.
We're going to start separating now.
Yeah, so, all, with that, though, the total figure on that was, I believe, sixty-one thousand dollars. So it's a big number, you know? I don't know what, if you took food and parking and lodging and stuff like that off there, I guess I, I don't know what that would be if you did that, but that's, that's a significant number. And then I guess I'm just a little bit uncomfortable about the, the home care aides, if we can resolve that issue. So those are, those would be the three things that I think we're a little bit short on information here, the ten cents, and then the home care aides.
You had that broken down by what part?
Yeah.
I, I looked at that a little bit, and as well, and that's where I picked up the, our contracted employee off of there. It kind of popped right off, off the chart there. Not that I'm picking on him, but it's just something I happened to see when I looked through there. Had I looked at it real carefully, I might have seen a few other things, but I don't mean to pick on one person, but it was just something that we kind of saw and were looking at together.
Yeah, and I think there's semi-ficiencies can be made as far as county vehicles, using county vehicles, as opposed to taking your own personal vehicle. I think that's, that's a step in the right direction.
I guess just looking at that one sheet, going back out since two thousand and eight, there's been three years in there it's been down at fifty cents. So it, I mean, it does fluctuate, you know, it makes a lot of difference, five, six, seven cents, it makes a lot of difference. But I agree with Dean, too, with the meals and the lodging in there. We really can't track it. As far as employees, I'd feel more comfortable if we could track it as far as what's actual miles, as opposed to the meals and lodging being in with it.
Home care aides is definitely the biggest one.
So the sixty thousand had meals and lodging in it?
Yes.
Yes.
Home danger was one of them.
And I know you guys love this comment, but it's always been done that way. It's always just been mileage and subsistence, and just one line. But we can enter, you know, we can enter the mileage in one line. It could, all three come out of the same total line, but they can be separated.
I'd advise that.
Let, let me throw this in the idea. So what if that figure includes other things? I think the point is, we're paying an excessive amount for whatever mileage it is. There's two solutions if you want to know exactly what it is for mileage. We could have Courtney separate it out in the future, and we could track it. That wouldn't make anything me, it's still, we'd still have the same issue. Another way you could go back individually and look at everybody's, just like we turn in our monthly mileage things, and it may have a different expense on there in addition to mileage, and subtract all that off. I don't want anybody to go spend several hours or days doing that. It would take a long time. I, I think the whole point is, we're paying fifty-seven and a half cents a mile, as are eighteen other counties. Sixty-nine counties have said, hey, we want people to make money for doing their job, not for driving their vehicles. We want to encourage them to drive county vehicles. If the sheriff has a meeting, we want him to take one of his cars. If the ambulance guy's taking a meeting, we want him to take one of their cars. They got a car that's not an ambulance, as opposed to pay mileage. If I'm going to go to a meeting, if there is a car available, if it's more than just outside, if it's several miles and the car's available, I should consider that. I, I think that's the point. And I don't think, if we divide that up and say, well, there's sixty thousand, half of it's mileage and half of it's other stuff.
It'd be nice.
It's the same, it's the same, it's the same issue.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, but I still think it'd be nice to be able to have those sorted out.
It would be nice. It would be nice. But I, I don't think it changes the situation.
I don't think it's probably an issue. I mean, the bottom line, when I looked at it this morning before I came, it said, you're sixty-one thousand dollars, and that's a significant amount of money. It really is, so.
And, you know, and I think for the most part, we don't have to be no use in it. I mean, God forbid, I'm not going to drive in, worse than I'm not going to go anyway, just to get mileage. That, you mean, going to add up a lot of money to that. But on the other hand, in a case like we're out for, maybe like you two, for us to come here and pick up a car might be more of an inconvenience than a lot of them. I mean, that'd be just time, time wasted, and if I'm going to Des Moines, I'm not going to come up here, or if I'm going to Cherokee, I'm not going to drive back east when you go straight north up to our gate, you know? But I have, I, I, I've been aware of that, there's been counties that paid less for a long time, because we talked about it one time up at the USR. And it's all report what they, I think some are ridiculous to the whole. But at the same time, I, I'd have no problem doing a percentage. You know, I'll make a bigger percentage. Well, I would, I sure welcome more discussion. I'd be more happy to make a proposal or a motion, and I think one thing that should be done before a motion is made is address some of the issues. There's, I think the first thing is, nothing has been done, with just, with just a free-for-all, so to speak, on mileage, and if that's a true state, correct statement. I think people are basically fairly responsible, I know, in collecting mileage or anything, but I don't think we've ever made a judgment call in doing anything other than fifty-seven and a half cents, so I think that lies in our court to do something. And now is a pretty good time to do it. We're talking about the budget and that type of thing. But home care aides is the biggest issue with me. The second one is when to do it. You make it effective on.
You make it effective on every mile that gets driven, starting tomorrow, or the July 1st, or what. That'd be the second biggest issue with me. And the third one, as far as, we do not have a car, that's just a county car that just parked out here for us to use. I don't think that needs to be addressed today. I think it's something we should look at at some point. If the sheriff trades in a car and he's got one left over that's okay, or maybe the engineer, I'm thinking of Convict One, there is a vehicle there that could be used for, and we've done that before. We've all gotten in Convict One and gone to meet. That's third, but that, that, that can be handled later. So for the home care aids, I would suggest that after we decide a rate, we decide what that effect would be on their salary, that change. I did it for 10 cents a gallon and came up with $4,000. I would, I would give Megan the ability to divide that $400, because she knows how, which employees drive more than others, and kind of dish that out. That's what I'd propose there. And have that go into effect the same time the mileage change does. They're going to get paid every month, just a little bit, they aren't going to get a lump sum check, their salary would just be adjusted.
Yeah, well, you said 4,000 and went to 400 plus.
Uh, 10 per employee.
Per employee, 400.
10 employees, so it's 400 per employee.
Okay, that's what, well, the way you said it, I took it for the whole group.
Yeah, there's a big difference, Dean.
But some could be $100.
That I can understand.
Some could be $100 or $200, some could be $500, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I know.
Shouldn't be the 400, 400, shouldn't be 100, should be 4,000.
Yes, yes, yes.
I hope, I just hope she can do a good job of, she's got mileage, you know, and home care aids, I think on that sheet that I had, have them pretty well divided out.
They were.
So they, so they know.
That is the one place where they did divide them.
Yeah, yep, so they can, she can nail that down pretty close as far as who does drive the most amount, so I, I feel comfortable with that.
Would you do that every year?
No. When it's done, it's done. That $400 carries over, say, the $4,000 carries forward forever.
That's forever.
So you don't do it every year.
What if the mileage rate went way down and then we're at...
The percentage is still the same. Their cost should be going down then too.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and that's...
Yeah, I know, but they're getting $400 a year, otherwise, that's why I asked if they looked at.
Yeah. If it, if it, okay, so what you're saying Courtney, if the mileage goes down, they're still making the money even if they don't.
Well, they could possibly be making more.
Yeah, they could be making more, and if it goes up, they're less, but...
You know, I guess that is kind of, that is kind of a sticky.
It was just a concern.
That is kind of a sticky thing, if you change somebody else's, if you get a new employee and you take some mileage away from somebody else.
Well...
You know, so I mean, that, could their...
No, the new employee, the new employee would know what it is when they come here and they're, they get a salary that, who else wants to get their salary? I don't think that's a problem. I think it's a problem with our current employees, who've been conditioned to depend on income off of mileage, which is wrong, it should be income for doing the job, not for driving.
So if you have this employee who's now driving this much, and boy, if I could drive less miles and switch a route or something like that, or, you know, say two years down the road, if I can buy, you know, push those onto somebody else changing around, I mean, be more efficient that way anyway, but, but I mean, I can see some variance there as far as...
The health...
The goal, the goal of the, of the individual would be, oh, okay, if they're going to give me more money, then I just want to drive less miles.
The director tries to reduce the mileage as much. For example, let's just say Teresa is in Coon Rapids, she does mostly Coon Rapids people.
Right.
Makes no sense for her to drive and take care of somebody and breed another, somebody that's close. But having reduced the mileage would certainly encourage the employees to cooperate with that idea.
Yeah.
With the director. We're not, we're trying to promote less mileage.
I guess guys, we're going to have to take a break here, because I scheduled that for 11:30 at Verizon.
Okay.
We'll take a break on this for right now, and I'll call Verizon, then we'll come back to it.
Very good.
We have dial nine to go out, right?
Good morning, Jacqueline, this is Marty Danzer with Carroll County Board of Supervisors. I talked to you, I'm running a little, we're running a little bit behind schedule, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll put you on speakerphone and we'll just kind of go through the Verizon contract and we'll go from there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, still there, Jacqueline?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. What this pertains to is basically, you sent us some information on the Verizon of putting some additional equipment on the tower, and I'll just kind of open it up for discussion here. We've got the five board of supervisors, there's Mark Bigmore, Dean Shetler, Gene Miners, Neil Bach, and myself, and then our auditor, and then also our county sheriff Doug Bass is here. So we'll just kind of open it up for questions, or if you want to start off with just kind of a preliminary, what, what's going on?
Okay, let me just grab one, okay?
Okay.
Um, so for the drawings, we will be removing three antennas and adding six new antennas, so there will be a total addition of three antennas. Three of them will be new, three of them will be a replacement. We're also going to be adding some accessory equipment, and we're going to be adding three RRUs and two distribution boxes, which for the plans are going to be mounted, the collar mount. And it looks like we'll also be adding two hybrid cables and removing six lines of COAC.
Okay.
If you want to take a more specific look at the detail of the collar mount, it would be on page three of the drawing.
Okay.
Page three. And that will give you the quadrant on detail, which is also the collar mount.
As far as the additional equipment, will that have, the tower that we currently have, I know that's been some discussion with, I've been in discussion with Crawford County also, that was one of their concerns, as far as the strength of the original tower, adding additional, will that have any impact there?
Um, no, I don't believe it do. I do, we have a passing structural analysis, and that will provide all the information for that as well, and it will, so anything that you need to see that it will be structurally safe and strong.
Is there any change of the rent? We've got a contract with you for the rental situation.
The rental situation, what we normally do is we see what we are currently paying, and we will do the math with, you know, for the addition of the three antennas and some accessory equipment, and we'll do it based off of that. If you guys have a number in place that you would like to propose, I can definitely go that way as well, whichever you prefer.
Okay. I just, I guess on the rent, I wasn't sure. We have a rental agreement with you, but we own the tower. So is, when you do the math and determine what the rent increase is, is that a suggestion, or is there a choice, or what, is your perspective there?
Well, normally what we do is we see what we're currently paying, and we do the, you know, the division with it, and see what we're currently paying for each antenna, and then if we're adding three antennas, we'll be paying, you know, for three antennas more, and then we'll probably add in some more for the accessory equipment and everything else. And once the drawings are approved, I'll be sending over the draft amendment, which will also have the pricing involved in it, which will have that math, and you know, that's at your discretion to approve and be forward.
As far as doing this work, if it's all okay to take the antennas down and put some new antennas up and that type of thing, that cause any issues around with our, because it's in close proximity to our courthouse, any issues with traffic or anything like that?
I'm sorry, I missed part of that, can you please repeat it?
We are in, the antenna is right adjacent to our courthouse, and as far as the mounting of the antennas, would it cause any issues with traffic in the street or anything like that?
In terms of overall disruption and logistics?
Got it. I don't believe it will, no. And also, if you have a specific construction supervisor or someone that you would like us to contact prior to making any changes and kind of coordinate a schedule, we're more than happy to do that as well.
As far as, this is Marty Danzer speaking again, as far as moving forward with this project, Jacqueline, what kind of timeframe are you looking at as far as getting the draft and everything put together, and then actually doing the actual mounting of the equipment?
I would say within six months normally, could be sooner. It all depends on the timing of getting the amendment approved and everything going through legal.
I guess we have the county sheriff Doug Bass here also. Will there be any disruption? Because we've got all of our county equipment on that tower also, would there be any disruption of that when this is being done?
No, there shouldn't be, there should be no disruption to anything else. Just what Verizon is dealing with their equipment.
Are these, are these, is this equipment lower than what's on there for the sheriffs? Do you know that offhand?
I don't, I don't believe it is. I'm assuming currently have a 155 centerline, we just forget the drawing, but I think it's on the, I believe it's all staying the same. Yeah, it appears the centerline is staying the same, so no, nothing will be mounted at a different height.
Okay, it'll all be same height.
I guess instead of these three, they're just going to be six.
Right. There's, there's a drawing, I'm trying to think where that drawing was at, kind of showed the six at the...
I think right here.
Yeah, here it is, yeah, this one shows the six instead of the three.
Oh, so it's up top. It's up in here then, it's not here. It's not on the mast, it's at the very top.
It looks like the tins are all in kind of a rack, and I guess they add more tins to the rack.
Right.
All up on top.
Marty, would you want to get the design person on the phone as well, for any parts of them? I do see that there's a lightning rod, it's going to raise approximately 11 feet. If you want to get him on the phone too, we can do that, and you can answer more detailed questions of the drawing. Is that all right with you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, great, let me give you his number.
Okay.
It is 952...
Okay.
903...
Okay.
Hold on, let me make sure this number is, yep, 9271.
9271, okay.
His name is Travis.
Okay.
He's expecting the call.
Okay, yeah, we can just call him. Does, does anybody else have any other questions for Jacqueline at this point?
What would be the next step? The next step is, is if we're interested in proceeding, are you going to make a financial proposal to us then, as terms of the lease?
Yeah, and that will be included in the draft amendment that I send out, and again, nothing happens until you guys approve, and...
Moving forward with it.
We work through the pricing and everything, so it's just what's going to happen next after I receive approval for the drawings from you guys. I will get legal for that are involved, and we'll be putting together a pricing worksheet as well as a draft amendment, and those will go hand in hand for your approvals.
At this point, Jacqueline, would it give, would it be all right if we took another week on this to kind of move forward for people to study it, and then get back with you next Monday? Would that be feasible?
Yeah, that's okay, that's fine, sure.
Marty, she could send us a draft proposal, we'd look at it in time.
I would think so.
Yeah, just go ahead and send a draft, we'll take a look at it.
Okay.
And then we'll decide whether...
Okay. Or is that, did you hear that comment, Jacqueline?
No, I didn't.
He wanted, can you just send us the draft proposal, and then we can make a decision, or how do you want to handle that?
I, I can't send it, because once the drawings are approved, they are inserted with the amendment, and if anything, legal won't proceed with the amendment until we're confirmed that the drawings are approved, because what the amendment is going to reflect is the drawings, as well as the pricing worksheet. So once we're confirmed that nothing's going to be changing with the drawings, then we move forward with the equipment and the pricing.
So we have to approve moving forward with it, before that we have to send out?
We can, we could approve it based on...
On a contingency.
On a contingency that it meets our...
Our approval.
Approval.
Yeah, and that's what the amendment will do, the amendment will, we won't be able to move forward with anything until the amendment is, is approved by you. So even if the drawings are approved, we can't do anything with it until we have agreed on a rent with each other, and the amendment is approved by you.
I have no problem with that.
No, I don't.
I think, go ahead.
I'm not quite sure what I'm looking at.
No, exactly.
To be honest.
It might be better if you want to, with Travis on the call as well, because he can kind of let you know more details of the drawings. I can tell you the equipment and everything, but he was the one that was involved in preparing the drawings, and you can answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. As far as the board, we're just sitting here right now, as far as that, with Travis, I mean, we're fine with what we've got here so far. We don't feel we need to go to that point, so. Do we want to...
I can provide you his email too, if you have any questions, I can also forward them to him, whatever you'd prefer.
Okay.
So what, she want a motion from us for approving the drawings?
Approve the drawings.
Do you want a motion? Would a motion from us be in approval, to approve the drawings at this point?
If you have like a letter, or if you can just email me saying the board says these are approved, I can use that and let them know to move forward to red zeros, and we can get you the draft amendment and the pricing worksheet. And if you guys have pricing that you'd like to propose, instead of us doing the math for you, you're more than welcome to do that as well.
Okay, so, well, we'll move forward with it from there, and if we have any other questions, we've got your number, and you know where, you know where to find me if you need to have any questions on our end, but we'll, we'll go ahead and move forward with it then.
Great, and what is a good timeframe that I can expect the approval, so that I can get everything up to legal?
Do you guys feel comfortable today, making a motion on it today?
Yeah, I think so.
We'll let you know today.
We'll, we'll get it sent to you today then, in an email form.
Great, and let me know if you have any other questions or need anything in the meantime.
Courtney, do you have her, you have her email on that email that she sent? Her email address? Yeah, we've got your email address, so we'll get that off to you yet today.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Okay, thanks, Jacqueline.
Okay. Bye.
Bye. So with that, I guess, Doug, do you have any other questions or comments?
Drawing charming at same height, except for the lightning rod.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's more going up higher with the lighting rod. How much motion do we approve the drawings, approve the drawings?
Got a motion on the floor, need a second?
I'll second that, and...
Do we want to put a contingency in there?
Subject to meeting our rental terms and expectations.
All we're doing is approve the plans.
Plans, yeah.
That's, that's, that's the reason I seconded that motion, because we're going to have another option to say no, if something goes, goes south.
So the motion is just to approve the plans?
Yeah.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Doug.
Thanks, Doug.
And why don't we go ahead and let them do the math on the rental change?
And then...
And we can...
We can tweak it from there.
We can tweak it if we don't like it, I guess.
Yeah.
But it might be, if it's acceptable, let's...
So Courtney, you want to send her an email then, that we did approve that? And then she can move forward with the draft proposal? And then she can move forward with the draft proposal? Okay, with that, we can go back to the county mileage reimbursement rate. Any other discussion there?
Yeah, just one other comment that came just late was, you know, you got to remember, you know, we get very few opportunities to really take a look at our expenses and, you know, I tell people all the time in this position, we don't have any big gaping eight-hundred-pound gorillas out there. You know, if so, our job would be pretty easy. But if we can chip away incrementally at, and target some of these areas, then that's what we're entrusted to do. So, you know, I encourage us to be doing that. However, talking out of both sides of my mouth, remember that if we do take an X percent reduction on our global policy for all employees and then go back in there, we already know that the HCA personnel are the ones that are using the majority of it. If we go back in there and reimburse them a like amount, remember the impact of this is going to be rather minimal, particularly when you consider the impact of FICA and IFRS.
Exactly.
So if, if, if we go take, say, a 20% proposal, the net effect on that is not going to be a 20% savings to the county.
That's true, Mark. That is true. But with them it won't be. But we're going to do this vote on a global basis, as you call it, which affects all the county. And it's something that will have a long-term effect. A month from now, we're not even, if, if we vote this through today, a month from now, it would be almost unnoticed. But over the period of years, it's going to add up. And I just feel that we're not being responsible if we just join 18 other counties and say fifty-seven and a half cents is easy, it's the highest rate out there that we can do reasonably. Let's take it when there's been 61 out of 80 counties or 74% have used a little bit of discretion and a little bit of leadership and said, well, wait a minute, that's not how we want people making money. That's not how we want our tax dollars spent. And perhaps a dollar per dollar, I don't know, that's, that's the best way or not. I think they'd rather be getting the money on the mileage than the compensation because it's tax-free.
Sure.
It works that way too. It's also missing out on IFRS. Yep.
But they're picking it back up on IFRS, right.
But they're picking it up on IFRS, yeah. So I don't know if exact dollar per dollar, and it's not exact, is the best thing, but I felt that we needed to do some type of compensation for that group of employees. And I couldn't think of any other group that's in that unique of a position.
You know, as far as taking the leadership, I think that, you know, I'd like to think that these other counties who kept it at 57 and a half percent or 57 and a half cents are showing some leadership there too. And they've determined that that is a good rate for them to use, I guess. I wouldn't like to think that they were.
I don't think they've talked about it. I don't think they, I don't think they.
It's.
They're like us, they've been doing the same thing every year.
Well, that, that can possibly be true.
It's not, it's not such a huge thing that you, you would maybe think about it, you just routinely do it. And today, it's one time, not talking about it, and maybe we should not routinely do it, we should do something different, so. I, I'm going to propose that we, trying to state this in a motion correctly, that we adjust our effective, let's go March first, pay 80% of the federal rate for county employees. And that rate at today's dollars would be, we got it down here somewhere.
Forty-six.
Forty-six cents is what it would be. And also determine the, for healthcare aides, I would do a dollar per dollar exchange on their history and give make and own the ability to. I would, I think I would just soon have those two separate motions. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I'll just. And, and I'll tell you my reason later. You can tell anytime you want, because I haven't had. Okay, all right. All right, at this point then, I'll just make a motion that effective traveling done after March first be compensated at 80% of the federal rate. That's the motion, period.
Got a motion on the floor, need a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion and a second on the floor to move it to 80% of the federal rate. All in favor, say aye.
I have a question.
Discussion.
Sorry. Just, would you have to amend the budget if we do this March first?
Because that'll be less, that'll be a minor amount less.
Okay.
We were going to spend more definitely, but we're spending less.
For this part of the motion, but the motion that might ensue, would you have to amend for salaries?
Aren't they going to set?
Not dollar for dollar, they won't.
Boy, you can't get that.
Well, I'm just asking if you'd have to amend the budget.
Hers, yeah, because hers was pretty tight.
You know what, what I would suggest, if you're asking a question, I would suggest that that one be started fiscal year, and that one you wouldn't have that issue.
Start at July one instead of March one?
You're not going to, the timings down together, but, but that motion I would.
But then we're shorting them for three months.
I know.
Okay, I was just.
No, you wouldn't be shorting it. That's not the point though, is it? You were going to start, start the rate.
March first.
No, if you were starting to make a wage.
I'm saying to answer his question about the budget, Mark, it was way through July first.
So it's in the next fiscal year.
To start the rate decrease, yeah.
Next fiscal year.
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay.
The wages.
Oh, the wages.
Okay. It's just, it's not in the motion, but it's understood that we're going to do, propose to do some type of fair adjustment with the healthcare home maker aides here. Perhaps, I would rather have this effective now, but I would be okay to have this effect July first so that we could do all that. Just, just have a motion to have the mileage rate go effect July first?
I think it's cleaner at a budget time, but.
Rather than do a budget amendment? Well, anyhow, we've got a motion on the floor, I guess.
Yeah, motion, and my only comment was is, is it's just a little deeper than what I was thinking, but, and again, I was using straight cents and not a percentage, but I just.
Well, the only reason I said was a percentage of it.
And I get the, yeah, and I get all that, right. Yeah, I just wasn't that smart coming into the room this morning. I was just thinking a straight cent, you know? And so I was, in my mind, I was thinking, you know, something along the lines of 50 cents, but which is about 87%. But the motion's made.
Got a motion, we got a second. Any other discussion?
So, so what is the motion now? The same motion that you originally had?
The motion that's on the floor is effective March church first to change the county reimbursement for mileage, mileage driven after that to 80% of the federal rate, which just happens to be 46 cents.
Got a motion?
He seconded it.
He seconded it. Okay, any other discussion? Not? Take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Uh, nay.
Aye.
Okay, I'll propose a second motion, say it was first, except effective July first.
Okay, got a motion?
There was three ayes on that last one?
Yeah.
So it did not pass.
I'm just thinking.
Okay, got a motion and a second, any other discussion? We're moving it, just change it to July first now instead of March first, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Okay, thanks for your consideration.
I would float a second motion, a third, that we move it to 87% of the federal rate.
On July first?
On July first, yes, sir.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, got a motion and a second, I mean, 87%, any other discussion? If not, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
We got all ayes on that one?
Yes. Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thanks. I think we made progress.
Yeah, you did.
So 87% of the.
It's only one.
Yeah.
Okay, then as far as the home care aides, do we want to come back on that or do that at a later date?
Definitely a later date, yeah. But before, but in one of our workshops.
Yeah, I think we need to address that, but say now would be as a percentage. Do some calculations.
Right. Okay, with that, we'll go down to county employee fiscal 16 salaries, next item on the agenda.
This doesn't need a motion, does it?
We still have to determine the percentage though, don't we?
Yeah, but I mean, do we need a motion on it? I don't think we do. It's approved in the budget, isn't it?
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look.
Yeah. I think we're, I think we're, I think everybody's kind of understanding two and a half, I think. I mean, that's what we're doing to unions, unless somebody else has got a difference.
I think in all fairness, I, I would concur with the two and a half percent.
Yeah, we have, we have one unit, just throw this out, we have one unit still remains at 244. When you start doing the individual math, the difference between 244 and two and a half is minimal. You know, it's a little bit larger, you know, when you go countywide, but I certainly wouldn't not support two and a half percent if that seems to be the consensus. Once again though, I would like to make sure that they understood that that is departmental for their own department head's discretion. I think that's finally starting to take hold, I think there's.
I agree with you there, Mark.
There's been some people that have done some good things there. And so my, my suggestion would be that if it's going to be at the stated percentage, that it would be at the department head's discretion on how to spread that.
I agree with that. I've been in favor of that for a long time. It gives an incentive for doing the better work and a little bit of a hammer for doing subpar work in some cases.
Merit.
Merit.
Yeah.
Well, we don't do merit, that's no problem.
Yeah, it's as close to a merit as you're driving to get.
Yeah.
I think it just went to the merits of something, first they don't have to deal with unions.
Okay, any other discussion?
So did we decide that needs a motion?
I'll just make a motion out of there.
Okay, got a motion and a.
That will make sure we got court satisfied either way.
Well, that way the department heads can move forward, I think that's kind of what they're setting.
Well, I know some are waiting for the first.
Yeah.
And some have.
So the motion would be for all non-represented labor.
All non-workers and labor.
At two and a half percent.
Or deputies.
At two and a half percent at the discretion.
Discretion.
Yeah, departmentally.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second for the two and a half percent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay, that brings us down to item number 10, the nonprofit funding. Does everybody have that sheet with them?
Yeah. What is it?
You've got it in there. If you don't want to make your copy.
Your trust is. Exceeding your good looks, your good judgment.
At this point, we haven't heard from us, have you?
Right.
Has it, has anybody reached out to them to ask them to come to us?
Have they made a contribution?
No.
I guess I didn't because I didn't know that they did.
Yeah, they have before.
Who do we have to contact there?
I'd say Ed or John. Do I do that?
I can, I can get ahold of it.
Unless you guys disagree, I, I just, I don't, I really.
I think we deserve an update.
I don't know what we're really currently funding. I really don't. You're good with that?
I'll get ahold of it.
Ed or John.
Be nice to know that, I guess.
Yeah, I think so.
As we do this, one entity that's not on our typed version is a SOC rail trail request as well.
I got it right there. But, but I wonder, is that just going to be figured into their budget? I didn't do their pre-budget. Did anybody remember seeing that in their pre-budget? You did it?
Indeed, I did that one.
We can add it here, I mean, because some of these come out of rural and some of them,
I mean, they all come out of different places, so.
Okay. And I had that on here too, but I just didn't know if it was included in their budget already.
It's difficult for them because I believe it's February 17th is when they're.
I don't think it was in there.
February 17th is when they're, got their bidding, so they won't know for two weeks how much they're going to want. I think that's the right date. And I think they tentatively had like 175,000 they were looking for, but that was all based on estimates. Did you have an amount, Mark?
I thought they were requesting 100,000, but, but, I mean, on that last sheet when they came and did their proposal, but I didn't bring that with me today, so I thought it was 100. Do you think it was 175?
I have it here.
I've got it at home, I mean, I could bring it to the workshop on Wednesday, but.
I don't have that one.
It's okay. I don't think it was in there.
I kind of looked for it this morning, Mark, I didn't see it on there, but there it's all that information they have brought, if you can find it.
Yeah.
There's nothing in their capital budget.
This isn't the same sheet I'm thinking of.
That's the information they brought to the meetings. And I had handwritten some figures there, but.
Okay. Yeah, I was looking for a different page, but, well, we'll have to kind of leave that one fairly open anyways.
I looked at that figure this morning and I, that's, I didn't find it.
Well, the, the, the project is in there.
So I mean, it does, does affect their budget as compared to much.
Okay. So the 350, so the 350 would include their capital campaign. Yeah, they've got it in there, but, but.
What about?
Well, total of $350,000 is what this says, which would include their capital contribution.
So they, the capital contribution?
Because as far as pledges and that, they're.
Yeah, what about pledges?
It would include that as well, because.
In this number here?
Well, if they've got it in income, donations, Swan Lake.
Is that should be about 80 or 90 thousand pledges?
They'd have to have it in there if they, if they were planning on it.
Yeah.
Okay, maybe right here?
So do we want to wait?
Maybe right here.
That could be it.
Maybe right there. So it looks like they're asking for 100,000 based on this, if I'm, I wasn't there.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
But if you've got 250 here and 350 here, it looks like they're looking at 100,000.
Yeah, and in talking to Jason, if I remember, he's talking less than that though, because they, they thought there was additional stuff coming in.
Yeah, they have, yeah. I don't know if this includes, you know, I don't know, they talked about Union Pacific, locally coming with their big grant and.
Right. Okay, we've got an approximate.
This, this number doesn't sound like the number that I heard them talk about though.
What I got for a moment is...
Not as completion, but we've got SRT funding and everything, so...
I don't think they asked us for a specific amount, I, I did have a handwritten note that there was a hundred and seventy-five thousand shortfall with where they were so far.
Okay.
That's where I got that figure from, it wasn't, and they didn't know how much they were going to ask us for. Because they have to have their February seventeenth letting to know what the costs are, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a lot of money, we just need to keep that in mind. And I don't know, can we do that with this or separately? But it's, it's, it's a lot of money and we need to keep track of it.
Let's just go ahead and start at the top, St. Anthony's Regional Hospital, we'll wait and see if we can get Ed Smith here to talk about that one.
Yeah, and once again, I just, not to beat a dead horse, but we don't even know if they're requesting funding.
Yeah, so we'll wait, and I'll try and get ahold of them today, yeah. And see if we can get them lined up here in the next week or so.
If they're not.
Okay, then we'll go down to new opportunities. That one is at thirteen thousand for fiscal year sixteen.
And there's three lines there, yep.
Yeah, and then there's for the substance abuse treatment is seven thousand eighty-five dollars. And then the substance abuse prevention is fifteen thousand five twenty-four.
Okay.
Keep those the same or what are, what's the top process?
Well, they, there's no increase, so it's hard to argue, so...
Right, right.
Historically, historically, it's been...
I'd say leave, leave the same.
Leave those three. Okay. Seven thousand eighty-five, fifteen, five twenty-four. Okay, then we'll go down to Region Twelve Transit Funding. And that's based on per capita, that's kind of a local match also. And I think that's based off of a percentage increase, two percent. And then the housing...
I'd say leave the same.
Leave that one the same, then the Housing Trust Fund, that is the same. And then Region Twelve, the membership fees, that's also based on per capita with a percentage increase, two percent. Any comments there, leave those the same?
No, leave the same, I mean, that's mine, I'm just speaking, but I'm good with leaving the same.
The Carroll County Wellness Coalition, that is a new proposal, that's a thousand dollar request for fiscal year sixteen. What are the comments there?
That was an early request, fairly long time ago, that is for a diet planning support through, and it was a one-time request. They made that quite clear. I don't have a problem with it. Hear everybody else's comments?
I guess I look at it down the road, as far as when we get into health insurance and that, it's probably one of those things that hopefully will fall under our wellness program.
Yeah, they were in on December first, they were probably the first people in actually. I felt like it was, I'll bet that every request on here has got good things in it, as does this one. I thought it was quite a bit of duplication or so very closely parallel to a lot of things, that Extension Service and New Opportunities, everybody's got nutrition programs out there. So I didn't see where it'd make a, a, a big difference actually. And it's a good program, don't get me wrong, but I, I just think that information on diet is just available everywhere. And we're paying for some of it, you can, you can find very easily if you're interested at all.
I wasn't here for the presentation, although I did get the information, and I'd have to say, I would have to say the same thing then. Echo Neil's remarks, I guess.
Gene?
I guess, I thought it was, it had some merit to it, I think it might, you know, maybe utilize it towards our wellness profile in the county, so, I don't know if I was counting. I guess I had no power.
Were you interested?
It was a one-time deal.
Were you interested in the full amount or just a thousand?
It's a one-time deal.
Any other comments? So what's the consensus of the board, leave it in or take it out?
What's yours?
What's yours?
I said the same as Gene, basically leave it in.
Okay, I guess we're gonna leave it in.
Full amount?
Full amount, a thousand there. Okay, the next one is the Animal Rescue of Carroll.
This one I have issues with, I'm just piping up, I'm sorry. Do you want to do an order here or anything like that? You know, I, I really, once again, I mean, I admire their work and it's, it's angels' work, it's, I just fail to understand where our role is in this. You know, where, you know, once again, we're called upon to take care of rural roads, public safety, human services, general services. I just, for me, I, I, it's probably my own fault, but I just don't understand what our role is in this. I, I also think that, you know, we still haven't been provided with those continuity plans, the sustainability plans, that's, that's one I really, real, you know, they said that they would live completely off of donations. Carroll is a very giving community, but that's just a, to me, that's a tall order, you're going to have to pay, they're going to hire personnel, one personnel. You got heat, lights, upkeep, you're going to have to put a roof on it someday, and parking lot, and I, I just don't see where the sustainable, I question future viability and sustainability. And then finally, it, it, I, I think it really opens up a lot of doors to other service groups, Carroll Rotary Club, Carroll Kowanis Club. I mean, those are doing human service areas, I don't mean to minimize pets, I understand the importance of pets. But I, I just don't see where our role is in this. So I, that's, that's one that I certainly don't see. Okay, much support, Gene?
I, well, when I was knocking on those, all those doors this fall, there was almost a dog behind every one of them. And so I, pets are important to people, therapeutically or, or whatever. But I think the county takes care of the people. And that's kind of where I'm going to leave it. I would not be in favor of it.
Okay.
I got it.
You're kind of saying the same thing I was going to say. No, I, I think that, you know, that, and I agree with what Mark says, you know, they've got a good plan, they're, I, I don't have any problem with someone taking care of pets and stuff. I mean, but I think that should, a lot of this should be the owner of that pet's responsibility, and that's the problem, probably the biggest problem is guys don't follow through on that. But I'm of the belief that we, as taxpayers of Carroll County, have other things to fund in regard to our funded streams versus this. And I had, I kind of had an issue with their first proposal, the building, you know what they got there? I mean, and, and again, I don't want to minimize pets, but that's an awful extravagant building for just pets. And I understand some people, and I, Mark knows, I almost got in an argument with our one lady in here one day. Because I made a comment about, you know, if you need to do, or watch the news down in Des Moines, the first thing they talk about is, well, they got the pets out of the bill and saved it, but they didn't say anything about the grants on the back bedroom. And I was getting about that point. And I, I just, I think we have a better place to put our dollars. And I, I would not support this at this time. And I've had, and I've had quite a few conversations with people that have not showed support for this. Because I think one thing is the first dollar price taking on that building.
Yeah, I agree with what's been said, I've gotten some feedback on this and some unsolicited feedback. Some of it was from responsible pet owners that think it was right, that they should, all the taxpayers should subsidize what was caused by a few irresponsible owners perhaps. And strong, strong, heavy opinion, not favoring tax supporting of an animal shelter. And I agree with most of the other comments that are made too, I, no need me repeating them again.
One thing I want to add, I did spend, I had some time up until Friday, Court is aware of this, I did call some of the auditors in regard to the, that line item sixty-two we talked about. Most of that is people that have put in a dollar figure in when the sheriff takes one to get to, to get disposed of. That's what it is, one county does pay for some additional food, that's all.
Pets are an option.
That's right.
They're an option, I don't know if you call them a luxury or not, but they're an option.
I kind of concur with the sentiments that are going around the table, to add a little bit to this discussion, I went down and talked to Doug here about two weeks ago about this issue with the county. And basically Doug puts seven hundred and fifty dollars in the budget for disposal of animals or euthanasia and whatever, to take them out to the vet clinic, we have not used that in two years. I agree, I give credit to the people that do this as a volunteer, but I just don't think it's a burden that should be placed upon the taxpayers to take care of pets. I think public safety and people come before pets do. So I concur with the same as everybody else around the table.
I think that's been decided.
Yep, so that one's at zero.
Here, everybody.
Okay. Next, we'll go down to the Freedom Rock, Manning was here, do we want to wait on that one? And get a little more information on that?
That's, that's what I'm saying, this is one that hasn't gotten any public feedback on, nobody knows about it yet. I would be glad to wait on that one.
Yeah, I think they've got some other resources I think you can still go to.
Well, I think they got some other resources, they did not even put a dollar figure on that, so I'm kind of, I was kind of surprised.
Yeah, because it is pretty vague.
Whatever we want to do.
Yeah. Okay, we'll leave that one open at this point, then we'll go down to CADC, their proposal for this year is sixty-six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Any discussion there?
Well, this is one that we seem to have mixed views on each and every year, they're definitely a valued member and partner to the city, or to the county and to the city, cities. But once again, I, I just, I, I just have difficulty with another ten percent increase again. I know they've done a really a lot of work going out and trying to get private donations, and I, I haven't heard how they're doing with their private fundraising, which, which, you know, they, they make members. Part of the requirement is once you're on that board, you know, you participate financially. And then over and above, they're seeking, you know, contributions from employees. I'm certainly not suggesting that we, we cut it or even keep it the same, but I just, I just have a difficult, we just approved raises for our very own employees at two and a half percent. You know, I just, I just don't know why we would just arbitrarily raise something like this, ten percent. Just seems like they're asking more than what's necessary. I would suggest a five percent increase, which I think is definitely adequate.
You want me to go first?
Yeah, I'd let you guys go first.
Well, you guys...
You guys know how I feel about this, I, you know, we talked about the valuation, increase in valuation, I know this year it hasn't been as much, but in the past it has. And I feel this is our right arm of economic development. And through their, some of their efforts, I'm not saying they're the only partnership that it's created at, but through their efforts, we've had some of those increased evaluations. And, you know, they have expenses too, just like everybody else, and I think, the thing is, we want those increased evaluations, well, they have to be, you know, some of these talk about supporting projects instead. Well, they have to do a lot of digging in the trenches too to get them first, so. And as far as their private partnership, they did get thirty, they're at thirty-four thousand right now. That was going to be my point, so. So I, I would recommend we keep it the way it is. Because we have cut them the last few years.
We've, we've raised them every year, we haven't cut them.
Cut it from their suggestion.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's a whole different story, we've, we've increased them every year.
Cut them from what their requests is.
Okay.
Neil?
All right, yeah, my, my statement is we've increased them every year, which we have, and I don't, and I would be willing to give them an increase of about two and a half percent is what I would think would be significant. That, that's more than inflation, it's, it's, it's as much as our employees are getting, it's more than the cost of living increase. They're still increasing faster than the world around them. So I would be in favor of giving them a two and a half percent increase.
I, is that all we have?
That's it.
I guess I kind of lean with Mark with the five percent, I think ten percent's a pretty good chunk of money at, at one given time. So that's where I'd be, is probably at the five percent. Dean, you want to add anything?
From what I heard and from what I know, I would probably go with the five percent.
So if we go with five percent, consensus?
Should be what, sixty?
Sixty-four, five, forty-nine, if my calculator works. Sixty-four, five, forty-nine, if your calculator works like mine. Sixty-four, five, forty-nine. Sixty-four.
So we'll increase that one to s, five percent to sixty-four, five, forty-nine? Okay. Then we'll go down to RSVP and foster grandparents, they're requesting nine thousand and slash one thousand.
They do great work, I'm, would propose leaving it the same.
Okay.
Me too.
I concur with that, Gene? Nine thousand slash one thousand for the foster grandparents. Okay, then we'll go down to Elder Bridge, any comments there, there's a slight increase there to thirteen, five, fifty-two.
Anybody else want to go first?
You're doing great for me.
Am I doing great, yeah, thank you very much. You go first.
Go ahead.
Let's cut them fifty percent.
You got, you got that.
This is one that, and I'll tell you what, we didn't want to go first, this is one that you do not cut, and I learned that from, first one you get here, it's done on a per capita basis. The investment we get back on this thing...
It's tenfold.
Return is great.
Yeah.
And I was, I was told a long time ago, whatever they want, you let them have, they're going to earn that back.
And that's why I'd like to make an adjustment on Megan's this morning, because she had it lowered than what it's been the last three years, and Megan's, I think that needs to be increased.
Asked to make revenue from them.
Right.
But the thing is, I think that on the federal level, they are getting cut back on some stuff. Remember what he said there? I think there kind of might be, I'm hard timing some of these funds.
Federal funding?
We may not be getting, you know, in the past, we've gotten a second round with them, and we may not be getting them. We can take a look at it, but I would be cautious. So my suggestion is leave it the way it is.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, I'm, I'm okay with leaving them where they requested there.
Dean or Mark, any comment?
I'm okay with that.
I'm good.
I'm fine with it?
By all means, yeah.
Okay. Thirteen, five, fifty-two. Okay, the next one we'll go down to is the Domestic Assault and Family Crisis Center. And that one is at five thousand.
Yeah, she was early also.
It'd be the same as last year.
I don't think I had a question about this one, but...
Well, it looks like that's where we've been at except for fifteen...
Back in fifteen requested.
Consensus to leave it the same then?
I think so, I have no problem with leaving it the same. Any other comments? Okay, leave that at five thousand. Okay, the next is the Family Resource Center, that one, they're requesting ten thousand, was five thousand last year.
Last year was an increase of mid-prior years.
I would tend to leave it at five thousand, their financials were pretty strong.
Any other comment?
I would concur.
I'm fine with five thousand. Dean or Gene, any other comments?
I'm not just making comments.
Okay, that's right. Okay, Dean, you have any?
I'm okay with that, I, you know, I'm okay.
Are you good with leaving it the same at least, or suggested? Okay.
Okay, we'll leave that at five thousand. And we'll go down to Carroll County Fairs next at twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty, which is the same as last year's request.
I don't have any issue with that. I don't have any issue with that.
I don't have an issue with it.
They're doing a great job down there.
Yeah. Okay, any other, any other comments?
Same.
Okay, so we'll leave that one the same. And we'll go down to the Historical Society, and their request is $4,000, same as last year. We'll leave that one the same.
I'm good with that.
A lot of volunteer effort there.
I don't have a problem with any of these are staying the same.
Okay. Community Concern, is that 3,000? That's the same as last year? Any comments there? Leave it the same?
Same.
Same.
Same. Okay, $3,000 for Community Concern. Okay, Brita Daycare, is that 6,000? The same as last year? Any comments there?
Same.
Leave that one the same? Okay. Okay, then we go down to Carroll Daycare. Is that 11,000? Same as last year?
Suggestion would be the same?
Same.
Yep.
I'm fine with being the same. Gene? Okay, so we'll leave that at 11,000. Manning Daycare, 8,500 last year. This year, they're requesting 15,000.
They have the idea that to, they always request high. They requested 15,000 the year before too.
Yeah.
And, and I mentioned for one in D A, real strong financials. And, and this one isn't really quite that strong, but they have improved from year to year. They're actually doing a pretty good job there. I, I think they want the extra money to do some expansion-
Right.
-in another building. So I, I would prefer to leave it the same myself, but I understand that the increase this year has a target behind it.
Mm-hmm. Any other discussion?
My suggestion would be to leave it the same.
If I were to make a suggestion, I'd just raise it to $1,000, so we could give them a little bit of extra money for that. Remodeling for that. So that would be my, I'm okay with staying the same.
Gene?
Leave it the same for us on that.
Okay, leave that the same then at 8,500. Is consensus? Okay, then the Manning Main Street Project, is $2,500?
That's committed.
That's committed.
That's committed, yes. So that's, that's got to stay the same.
Agreed to that.
That'll be the last one too.
Okay.
This will be the last one.
Okay, then we go down to Manning House Barn. There's nothing there. White Rock, there's nothing there. That's been taken care of?
Correct.
And then the Templeton Community Center Project, that's done?
That's done.
Okay, then we go down to the Rural Services under Soil and Water. They're requesting 7,000. Refiscal, they were $5,000 last year.
I forgot what they wanted the increase for.
Newsletter, education outreach.
But you know, a lot of counties don't need, a lot of counties don't go through what we do here, period.
Newsletter field days and stewardship materials to schools.
Right.
I'd leave them the same. I, I appreciate that we're still on board with them.
I agree with 5,000. I can live with that. Gene?
Yeah.
5,000 for that one? Leave that the same as last year? Okay, then we'll go down to the last four, the libraries. Carroll Library is 38, 824. And then in Rapids is 13,078. Glidden is 13,078, and Manning Library is 13,078.
And is that number 8% what they, is basically what they're asking for, 8% increase?
Yep.
I'm going to go back to where I was on different entity, that I would go with like a, about a 2% or 3% increase. And my, my feeling is that just you're increasing faster than the economy around you even at that. Or, so I'll just say 2.5% to kind of round it.
Okay. Mark, you got any comment?
You know, I really wish that the state of Iowa, you know, it's, it's by code, we have to support- And this comes out of rural, the rural levy, doesn't it Courtney?
Yes.
But, but they don't say how much, or a minimum, or a maximum. They just don't give us any guidance whatsoever. Joan, for years, used to, you know, tell us that we were on the lighter side per capita. And library board member gave me some information last year that did seem to support we're on the lighter side. Doesn't mean we're on the lightest side. And, and, you know, I, I think we'll, got a huge issue with the library right here in Carroll. You know, perhaps to a lesser extent, you see it in the other three as well. I'm not subscribing to the fact that libraries are dead whatsoever. I think they have a very important role. I think they're, they're, they should be considered infrastructure. Different than streets and sewers, and power and electricity and so on. But the number in my head, Neil, was 5%. And, and that's not based on any scientific data whatsoever. It lent itself a little bit to what I was thinking in terms of C A D C there. But I, you know, I'm, I'm pretty willing to go along with the general consensus of the board here.
Dean?
What was the comment about, we're a little bit light, or there?
Per capita, per capita, what our contribution is per capita to the libraries is, is less. You know, a lot of the numbers are skewed as far as their rural service, their rural usage, because so many of their rural usage is impacted within the two mile radius of Carroll. And that's considered rural, but, you know, for all intents and purposes, it's Carroll. You know, when you start figuring in what truly rural Carroll use in terms of zip codes and things like that, it's much less than what they try to validate, but.
Carroll County now pays, according to their figures, $16.22 per rural capita. And Iowa per capita average is 1751.
So it's not that much lower?
Yeah, we're slightly lower than average.
I would go with Mark's.
Thanks for saying that.
Did you look at some of the numbers? I can't believe some of the counties are paying what they do.
Little or a lot?
One of them, I know that's, here's a conservative county, it's 35?
Here's one that pays 10, that's Shelby. Calhoun pays 62.
So there's a big difference right there.
Oh, it's, it's all over the board, Shelby. And I have that study information that I, I think I know where it is. I could bring it in for you for a workshop if you want to wait. But it's, it showed that we were a little on the light side. Not by much.
I have no problem with it.
I feel the same way, 5%. So add 5% to each one of those lines. So 38.
And there's some counties that, you know, they only have two or three libraries to support. We've got to support four. I mean, it's, it's just not as simple as the numbers show.
So I'd put the one for Carroll at 37, 745, 40?
That's what I show. 37, let's just round it down, 37, 745.
And then the other ones would be 12, 109 times 5.
You show 12, 714, Marty?
Mm-hmm. Yep, 12, 714 would be the other three.
And we're going to hold off on this Swan Lake Trail until-
Yeah, and I'll try, and on the St. Anthony one, I'll try and get ahold of them today.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay. Keep moving down the line. Okay, then next we'll go into the Manure Management Annual Updates. We've got four of those today. Ivan Helber in Section 15 of Washington Township, there's no changes. Jody Miners in Harold Miners, the Section 3 of Viola Township in Ottoman County, there's no changes there. The third one is Alan Friedman, Section 27 of Eden Township. And this one's just an update of the original plan. And then the last one is Brian Kluckey, Section 5 of Viola Township in Ottoman County. This is an update of the original plan on that one also. So, Courtney? Okay, that should, through everything on the agenda, we'll go to committee reports next. Neil, you want to start off?
You're led to it. All right, first I'll talk about Tuesday. We had a safety meeting. And sometimes information makes a lot of, covers a lot of distance. I know Gene got an email from, I guess it was Berlin Matthews in Clay County. Had what the guidelines for court facility things are. I gave that to Zach, and he passed on to the sheriff, and he made copies, and we passed it around. And I think we agreed that it just makes sense to have the safety committee also be, that's the extra one there, also be the courthouse facility, or courthouse security thing. I've also noted that on February 12th, at our ISAC, at our supervisors meeting, one of the chief judges is going to come in and talk about that subject. So we're going to make some decisions at our next meeting, February 12th. Chief Justice Katie is going to talk to the supervisors like it's more than that. And I think, do you have a meeting also coming up that covers courthouse security?
In March.
In March, okay. So we set our next meeting for the end of March, so we have the information from your meeting and mine. We didn't know, we thought, Zach, Zach thought it was in March, so our next meeting is going to be March 31st. So I assume it's before that.
Yeah, it's, well, what's when the spring school?
Spring school, okay, March 15th. Very good.
I think that meeting's open to everybody, so.
Okay, okay, good enough. All right, so that's, that's one step we're going to take, is, is look into this. And if you ever will look through here, there's a lot of suggestions. Some of them are pretty good, some are cheap and easy, and some are maybe designed more for Polk County than Carroll County. But it's guidelines to start with. Then we also went over the accident investigation report. We only had one accident, just super good. It was a gal who kind of hurt her back, and she came out of it okay. But that's what you're supposed to do when you think you had her at work, is report it. She did. It was an ouch, but okay. Also, we talked about the Alice Training, and that is set up for two dates, and I think it'd be good if we attended. I plan on attending the one that's on Feb, on the 4th at 1:30. And there's also one on February 10th, and I believe that one's at 11:00 AM. And I, so, so those are the two dates of the Alice Training. We also talked, we did the yearly fire contingency check. He had a visit from Scott Smith. He's the I M W C A insurance representative. He's thought that we needed a emergency plan, and this is all going to fall together with courthouse security. And overall, he was very happy with how things were. He noted that we had some power washers, and he gave Zach some information that should be attached to every power washer. He had them coated in plastic, and now the power washers everywhere have that, those safety constructions. Because power washers are dangerous tools nowadays, they really are. They kick out a lot. And that was our safety meeting. Glad to have a safety meeting. It was a very good meeting. Then I had a, Tuesday night, had a foster grandparent meeting. And the foster grandparents, we've got, there's 12 active parents. We've got one just starting at Fairview. It was kind of neat that they got what was called the Christmas Wish. And I heard about it on Case AM, where some people sponsor things. And this was just kind of like a appreciation lunch for all the foster grandparents. It's amazing how many hours some of those people put in. So I was glad that they had gotten one of those Christmas Wish things, and they brought all the foster grandparents together for a free lunch. Compliments of the sponsors, Case AM, and I don't know, we also was. Okay, had their January in-service. It was the Stand Tall Program. It's kind of designed for elderly people who often fall. And they're making progress at becoming a 501(c)(3). Okay, also on Tuesday evening, had the R S V P. We sort of meet together. Went over our financials. They looked good. We had the election of the board members, so yours truly is the chairperson again. What else did we do there? Oh, they got the community foundation grant to get a, get the little free libraries. And then they're going to be building some little free libraries, and putting them up around different communities. They're going to put one at Swan Lake, and some of the other communities. I think Rita's getting one, Templeton's getting one. And Manning, just a place you can check in and out books. And they're going to be building those. Talked about their Martin Luther King Day of Service. Had to do the first aid this year, and talked about some funding updates. And in addition to that, I guess I did work with Gene on the VA and the general assistance budget, and Mark with the case management budget. I didn't get to stay further very much of it, but I also attended the legislative forum on Saturday morning, the first part of it anyway. That was my week.
Okay, Gene?
Okay, Tuesday we had C A D C, they had their board meeting. They did appoint a board member for replacement, and that was Joe Behrens from Templeton, who's going to sit on that. And they had the new unemployment numbers. We were at 2.6 unemployment. And they went through some committee assignments. We all have different ones that we're involved in. And they talked about a renewed Iowa event that's coming up, and that's being sponsored by DMAC and a farm bureau. And then they talked about the private investment, and I was wrong on it. It was 32, 8, not 34. They did set up the Washington Access Days, June 15th and 16th, was one of the sure crews that gets prepared. So Carroll High is having a career fair coming up. And I don't have a date on that, but it'll be, they will have it, and it's not only for Carroll County people, but for other ones. And then we had-
I think it's March 5th, I think.
Yeah, I think that might be. Might be having a directorship for it. She had been, actually, she'd been kind of busy with some, some prospects, and of course, it's March 26th.
Career night?
I just ran across the brochure.
Something else is March 5th. It is, it's the 26th. Thank you.
And then on Wednesday, I went to the, was, to Transportation Day down to Capitol. It was over to Wallaceville, listened to numerous speakers, except for two that wasn't there because of cancer. That was the governor, lieutenant governor. And then went over back to the Capitol later on in the afternoon. I will say again this year, it's got a very positive spin on the 10 cents to happen. Of course, last year, even while we went down, it was positive, and also the other kind of fellow that helped Pam make. One thing we did not do today is we need to get that resolution-
Oh, that's right.
For building a crowd.
We'd like to have that.
Yes, you would.
The same one that we did last year's fine, if we want to do it that. I know we did that because of the case that-
I had Courtney pull that up like last Friday.
Have a copy of what we did last year.
Yeah.
They would like to have that one, you know.
He wanted us to do it again, even if we've already passed it, because a lot of supervisors have new members.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They wanted to get the support. And then on Thursday, I had a new opportunities board meeting. Went through financials. We did recognize Cindy Fitzpatrick. She's retired from Head Start after 30 years of service. So went through the Head Start. Basically, I gave you all that information last week. We did approve weatherization assistance programs. We approved the contract with DEEP 1501, which is $300,914 for a year. And that's a state grant. And then we have the other ones that are, I P L 1501, which is the Iowa Powers, 94,096 to 7. And Mid Americas, which is the M E C 1501, is 113,103. And B H E is 1501, is Black Hills, for 23,546. Basically, for the most part, are all pretty close. And then we did do some amendments on the United Way contract with the Greater Central- And then we did do some amendments on the United Way contract with, uh, Greater Central Iowa at Des Moines, in regard to the, um, uh, Center of Dunlop, uh, Waukegan. And, uh, on the Family Building Center. And then we had, oh, we had a, a quality improvement chart audit report that we approved from the clinicals. And talked about, we need to get some board slots filled. And, um, that was basically about it. And then Thursday, I did the auditor with Mark, budget, and like Neil said, Friday was general, that's the general service. And then I was also at the legislative forum. And the other thing, I think you guys all got the email, two thousand, we got to go to Carroll County Conservation Foundation, which is a five oh one three C, and Jason will utilize that for conservation, out of the two, so...
I didn't have much, except for the, uh, the, uh, Transportation Day now, the, uh, Capitol. And I thought that went fairly well. I mean, I was more encouraged by reading the paper the next day, and they had some comments that they gave, the next, you know, the paper that they didn't give us. So I, I was encouraged by that. There's definitely a need out there, from what you hear. We ran into Mark Sigbar at Capitol, and talked to him, and he was supporting it, so... Other than that, that's my week. Did you, did Mark say anything about the ten cent thing, on the, uh...
Uh, he didn't say as much as, uh, as...
Brian.
Brian, Brian made quite clear that he was supporting something.
Okay, well, that's good.
And with some of the comments he made, I could tell who was group. I think Bill Ackroff got a hold of it.
Otherwise, yeah, that's my week.
Okay, Mark?
Uh, Tuesday, as I mentioned, Courtney and I met with Holmes Murphy. On Thursday, uh, did Courtney's and the supervisor's budgets with Gene. Emergency Management and E nine one one met that night, Thursday night. Jeff Kaler was renominated again for chairperson for both. Uh, I will again serve as vice chair for nine one one, while Doug will be emergency management. Uh, we discussed the budget, um, for both, well, I'll start with nine one one. Uh, the nine one one budget stays pretty much the same, gonna use a little bit more reserves. But essentially, we talked earlier about a thirty thousand dollar contribution to the comm center. Along with that, we set the public hearing date for February nineteenth at six PM. Uh, that'll be at the courthouse meeting room. And then, um, also, we had some discussion about the nine one one board membership. Uh, we had to pass around a form and make sure we've got the appropriate, uh, fire representative, you know, on there. There's been a little confusion with that, so that'll be taken care of. And then, uh, there will be a, a budget amendment, uh, for the, the fifteen budget year because of the GeoCom project. And, um, then on emergency management, so I presented there. And once again, EMPG, uh, that's the FEMA grant, is running, uh, slow, but expected to be the same. Once again, it will, uh, it, but it, there's a new process to it now, where we actually, it's not automatic, and we have to apply for it through a procurement process. Um, it, it will just probably slow it down, will be the net effect of it. Uh, the last two years, it's been about eighteen thousand dollars, and she expects it to be the same. Bad news is Courtney just left the room. Courtney's gonna have to kinda help Sarah, 'cause it's gonna involve some accounting. Also set the public hearing date for February fifteenth, that'll be immediately thereafter of the nine one one meeting. And then, um, the Alert Iowa is the new statewide, uh, Code Red system, uh, mass information system. It's going to go live approximately March first. There is a little bit of question on whether or not everybody that signed up on Hyperreach will automatically transfer, or whether or not there's gonna be a whole nother signup period for that. Uh, it's all based on the MSAG data that's coming over from the comm center. And, uh, Hyperreach will, it's paid through February twenty-eighth, so there's a possibility there could be a gap in the two systems. Uh, they didn't wanna continue paying on it and re-contract when you got the statewide system. One other thing about the, uh, the Alert Iowa, uh, program is, um, did, has, you guys are all signed up for Hyperreach? Have you ever received a call? And remember, it's, it's, it's not necessarily mass county-wide notification. It has the ability to, you know, highlight, say like, the boiling water, uh, once, I think, down in Manila, and it affected Manning. And, um, so I mean, it, it, but needless to say, there's a little bit of work on that, just to make sure that it's broadcasting the way it's supposed to do. And then there was a small presentation and update about the Carroll County Preparedness Coalition, and a training exercise, which I'll attend on February thirteenth. That's also gonna involve a, uh, school shooting. And then on Friday was case management, uh, pre-budget with Neil. And then Saturday was also the legislative forum. That was my week.
Okay. Mine, Wednesday went down with Gene and, and Region Twelve band with, uh, the Transportation Day. It's kinda interesting, here's, they had a lot of speakers as far as some of the ag groups, the commodity groups there. Thought that was very interesting, supporting the gas tax. Also, it was kinda interesting how a lot of the counties, they brought forth about the, a lot of counties are being forced to bond, because the roads are getting in such tough shape that we need to move forward with it. And I think the way things are looking, I think the momentum's pretty good for seeing the ten cent, as things are looking at this point. So, and then after we got back from there, sent checks at Region Twelve. And then on Thursday, I visited with that Jacqueline Zerbs with Verizon, kinda got things set up today, for today with her, so that was pretty much my week. Courtney?
I do have that resolution here. I just changed the date of the, uh...
Do we need to add that to the agenda and approve that?
If we're gonna do it today, we would have to add it.
Ooh, let's see. Ooh. Any assistance of time?
That is the same one that we did last year, so...
Mm-hmm. Yeah, did it last Friday?
Because I think it's gonna, could wind up happening sooner than later, for, in this month, is what they're talking. So I think if we wanna do it, we should get, um, that's up to you, if you wanna add it today.
Yeah, I had no problem adding it to the agenda today. I'm making more sure it's not that big a deal.
And basically, that's a resolution for the transport, or for the gas tax increase? In support of it? Okay, got a motion, need a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any other discussion? If there is none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, any comments from those in attendance?
Are we gonna...
Wade, for his got the motion.
Okay.
We just added to the agenda.
Added to, okay, yeah, no.
I will make a motion to add it, or to approve the resolution, whatever it is, in regard to the support of, of, a resolution to ISAC for support of a gas tax increase, or any other, I think, I could close about any other.
Okay, got a motion, you need a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, got a ma-, motion and a second, this is a resolution, so we'll have to do roll call? Yes.
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 Now, comments from those in attendance? Okay, not, nothing else, there's a motion for an order adjourned?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
See you Wednesday. Oh, is this it?
Yeah.